Order.
Now we're good.
We're good. The first item on the agenda is a review and recommendation of the lot line revision application known as the Harnett Plan of Lots Number Two, submitted by Matt Harnett. One oh oh two one Grubbs Road. Okay, RJ.
I'm on screen now. Um, I believe that actually this is, this is a bit of a throwback for me because I want to say that this, this whole property came up for its original. You know, simple subdivision, lot line revision consolidation. There were kind of different, a few different moving parts with this lot. Um, at my very first planning commission meeting here. Uh, so Mr. Harnett has, has since, uh, wanted to make a couple more changes just to some of the, the way that the properties were apportioned. I think, um, potentially to, I'll, I'll cue the mic and let him, let him speak on exactly what he's thinking there. But basically there's just a small lot line revision in addition to what we did before. Um, I believe that this plan has been reviewed by the town engineers compliant with all our subdivision design regulations. Um, I just got the letter back from the county today that they're A okay with all the formatting and everything. Um, so, Mr. Harnett, is there anything you'd like to add?
Oh, thank you, RJ, and I apologize. I'm traveling for work, so I had to call in from an Uber. But thanks, uh, to the planning commission and everybody for, uh, having the time to, to take a look at this. And yeah, basically I own both properties and I'm just moving the lot line a little bit. And, um, so it's, you know, we're all there in the plan, so just wanted to bring it forth and, uh, for everybody's consideration. I don't have really too much more to add unless there's specific questions.
You have anything, RJ?
Uh, I, I don't have anything to add. This one's a pretty, pretty straightforward one.
RJ, I do have one comment, um, that the, uh, for the applicant, wh- what is proposed to happen with the existing garages?
Oh, sorry, Matt, I'm gonna have to send you another mic.
Sorry, I keep muting myself because of the traffic, but yeah, I mean, I think we'll, uh, I mean, if material prices come down, I would like to build there. It is Zoned R two, so I kind of want to keep my flexibility in case I don't build there and I could sell it to somebody. You know, maybe somebody wants to develop it or something. I personally, I, I kind of, my thought is if I build there, I'll make those that those barns look nicer. And if I don't build there and I hold on to it, you know, I would, I would agree to take them down, get rid of them. I just need a little bit of time to wait for material prices to come down because um, I know the kind of the, the plan is, I think RJ was mentioning a year and I hope to do it in a year, but you know, I, I really don't know where material prices are going.
Okay, well, well, you can't, you can't have, um, accessory structures on a lot without a primary structure. That's the key issue here. And in the past, what we've done with this is given people a time limit to take it down. So, um, I'm not sure what that time level would be. There should be some sort of note on the plan to that effect. That's just my recommendation.
RJ?
Uh, I, that's, you know, I think that, uh, in the previous lot line revision, because this issue had come up since that was the original, you know, re-subdivision of the properties. I believe that we said, you know, basically within a year, I want to say is what we put on the original plan.
I don't remember.
Of course, between now and then, there, there have been some things that have happened in the world. So, you know, I, I would say it would be reasonable to just sort of re-extend the year. Um, since we're essentially back here around the same time of year, uh, not too long after COVID kicked off when the original law was approved.
And I remember RJ, we didn't touch this parcel last time for that reason. So technically this plan or this lot was never part of the original plan. So technically that was never even, this was never even required prior because I had never submitted anything for this, for this, for this lot.
Year would be, you know, reasonable time to basically check in and, and see if things are moving. Um, so if everyone else is okay with that, uh, you know, that would be my recommendation.
Yeah, they're not that nice of little buildings. I mean, hopefully I can build and great. And if not, I'll sell it. Somebody else probably won't want them there anyhow. So then I would just take them down. That's not, that doesn't seem unreasonable. And if for some reason things are sideways and I, and I haven't done either of those things and I can't do it, I'll come to you guys and ask for an extension, but I think that's reasonable a year.
Any comments?
No.
That's fine.
Good.
Or?
I'm good. Yeah.
Jonathan? Okay.
No questions.
Thank you.
So, uh, RJ, we should make a motion then on this? Okay, could we have a motion to recommend town, to town council to approve the lot line revision application for the Harnett Plan of Lots Number Two?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Posed? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Guys.
Right.
Okay, second item on the agenda is the review of the proposed rezoning of the Marwa property. Prop parcels to our three townhomes from our two single family homes. Property is located on the western side of Perry Highway, north of Vestal Park.
All right, uh, I believe we've got Mr. Steven Victor here tonight. Not sure if there's anyone else on board. Steve?
There is not, just me.
All right, just you. Um, so I, I will mostly turn it over to, to Mr. Victor to explain the background of this property because from what I understand, the background of it is, is longer than my tenure here. Um, but, you know, just as, as sort of general orienting, it was mentioned on the agenda. But, um, the, these are three parcels basically that are on the western side of the highway. Um, you know, if you, if you're coming towards the Wexford Flats, they're going up the hill on your left, basically. Um, and with that, Mr. Victor, I, I will, uh, get you PowerPoint ability and, uh, let you kick it off.
All right. Uh, let me grab my PowerPoint. And ready to roll. Uh, good evening. My name is Steven Victor from Victor Wetzel Associates. And I'm here to discuss the proposed R two to R three rezoning of the Marwa property. The property itself, uh, is on the westerly side. So the orientation with this drawing and the rest of the drawings have north to the right. And so here is Perry Highway Route nineteen. And, uh, the site itself is comprised of three parcels, as RJ has described it, on the westerly side of Perry Highway. Uh, it abuts Sarver Lane, a private street on the south. And then there's a series of four single family lots that also butt onto Perry Highway. Uh, behind us is, to the west is Oak Ridge Drive. All of the zoning around us is in the R two zoning district. Uh, further to the south is a C one parcel, but all the abutting property is R two. Not all of the abutting property though is can, uh, traditional R two single family. In that to the west and north of us is the Oak Ridge Plan and the single family lots I mentioned. But to the east of us, on the other side of Perry Highway is the North Hills Lodge, followed by a self-storage facility, followed by office buildings and then continued office buildings. To the south of us, where we had Sarver Lane, which is a private street, uh, there is an electrical substation in this area of the property. So there's quite a mixed use of activities within this R two zoning district. Uh, topographically, the site primarily sits above Perry Highway. Perry Highway is, it goes from the north to the south, has almost a hundred feet of fall across the face of the property. Uh, from the northeasternly corner, uh, you rise up about ten feet to a ridge line. And that ridge line runs north, south through the site. The very southern tip of the property appears to be an old rock quarry. Uh, by the extent of the sheer rock face that you have here in this southeastern corner of the site. The proposal here is to rezone to R three to allow for a townhouse development. As part of McCandless's requirements, we have submitted a rezoning plan to show the intent of this. We understand that with the rezoning comes the obligation to comply with the design as shown here. So if there are comments that you would like to make during the rezoning process regarding the design, uh, that would be appropriate as well. Uh, basically what you see is what you would get with a continued rezoning. The site itself, uh, has very limited access. Uh, there are no public streets to the north or west of us. And to the south of us is Sarver Lane, which is a private street. We also have the constraint of the topography where along Perry Highway it's dropping, therefore it's exceptionally steep here in the southeastern portion of the site. So it pretty well sets that there is one entry point into the property today, which is where there's an existing driveway that goes up to a single family house, which has been the traditional use of the property. We would follow that same location for the driveway with a new street. It'd be a private street that would come in and flow from north to south, terminating in a blue road at this point. And off of our main street would be a series of courts. One, two, a short stub here, and then a third one, fourth one, excuse me, in the southeastern corner. Those units along the, or backing up against Perry Highway uh, are different from the other units in that these five buildings have a rear entry garage. And the reason for that is, as you enter into the plan and drive down the street, you would not be looking at a series of garage doors here, but the garage doors would be hidden around the back. It is only until you enter into the courts or the loop that the garage doors themselves would be open and visible. The zoning in the R three district requires a one hundred foot perimeter setback uh, from any residential R two type zoning. So there is a hundred foot setback shown here on the north, a hundred foot setback here on the west, and a hundred foot setback line on the south. We would be proposing that along the Route nineteen side, that a hundred foot setback be reduced to seventy-five feet. So the line here represent seventy-five. Reason for that is, and that would be only allowed if we were granted a variance, which we would request upon receiving rezoning. The reason we believe the hundred foot is reduction to seventy-five feet is reasonable is that you have an exceptionally large right of way here on Perry Highway. And the uses across the street from us are not part of those that require a hundred foot setback, but they're required because they, those uses are, uh, and uh, currently in the R two zoning. The townhouses that are proposed are, would be constructed by Ryan Homes. This is their Wexford Townhouse. Uh, it's a twenty-four foot wide, two-car garage, three-level townhouse. The lower level would be garage and behind the garage would be a den. On the main level would be the living room, dining room, kitchen. And on the upper level would be three bedrooms. This unit, uh, those units that back onto Perry Highway, uh, will, you would not be seeing the garage doors. You would only be seeing the main level and the upper level with this garage door posi-, or excuse me, the front door positioned here on that particular model and with the garages in the back. And zooming in to see the plan in a little more detail. Again, we were talking about having within the, uh, and that the, the main street would have, uh, parallel parking along that main street. Again, consistent with the character of what we wanted to achieve with eliminating the garage doors along the main access street. Sidewalks, the red lines running throughout would occur on both sides of the streets and come back out to Perry Highway. Stormwater management could be collected in two locations, here on the western and here in the southeastern corners of the site. Would point out that the town of McCandless has primarily used R three in scattered sites. I've circled in blue here, the fourteen different R three sites that you have throughout the township, town. And, uh, you'll see the majority of them are surrounded by or adjacent to the light blue R two color. So the type of transition and the location of what we're proposing to do is consistent with your past zoning practices. Also, if you look along Perry Highway and the Route nineteen corridor, you will see some of the most intensive uses, whether it be in the commercial, the D District or other, uh, in more intensive uses along those corridors. So a rezoning of our site located here uh, would be consistent with that sort of transitional zoning or contour zoning that often occurs between a major roadway and, uh, coming immediately off of that with a high, more high intensive use. And then transitioning downward to lower uses as you get away from this, the site. We believe there's five reasons why a rezoning of the property, uh, would be appropriate. First, this is a neighborhood of mixed uses. Uh, it is R two zoning, but there are a variety of uses, uh, as we demonstrated. The property has its access limited to Route nineteen, uh, which we felt made it more desirable for a multi-family and certainly less desirable for a single family type development. We felt that the Route nineteen corridor is an area of high intensity zoning. And so this, uh, zoning to multi-family would be consistent with that. And McCandless has traditionally scattered its R three zoning, usually in proximity to R two neighborhoods. And lastly, McCandless is unique in that it has a hundred foot R three setback for any structures in their multi-family zoning districts. So it ensures that there will be an appropriate buffering, dimensional buffering between the single family uh, that we do abut to the north and west and our multi-family. So with that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions?
Uh, Mr. Victor. Share down for now, by the way, um, but we can put it back up if we need it again.
All right.
I'm sorry, I think, Mr. Wukoskis, were you talking?
Yeah, I was talking, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Victor, uh, R three, uh, R, R three also provides for garden type apartments, doesn't it?
Yes, it does. And often, oftentimes in a rezoning, a municipality is sort of opening the door to all uses that are required, that will be permitted in there. So on one hand, we could say we're doing townhouses, but after the rezoning, we could walk in with garden apartments.
Right.
That is, that is not the case under McCandless's policy, not only policy, but your law specifically says that I must submit a concept plan, which we've labeled the rezoning plan. And that deviation from the rezoning plan would void the rezoning.
Hmm, that's interesting.
RJ, is that not correct?
Uh, I believe there are stipulations in the code that state as much, however, rezoning is done by a zoning ordinance that has to go through a public hearing. So as far as I know, there is no legal process to automatically revert a property.
Well, there's no, not to revert it, but it, you can't take it away from us if we fail to implement that. It's certainly how I read your code.
We would have to go through a subsequent rezoning process to zone the property back, but that is something that is under our purview just as a municipality in general. So again, as far as I know, there is, um, there are some stipulations in the code that state as much, but we would have to cross that bridge when we come from it.
Well, we have no interest in garden apartments. We are interested in building townhouses.
And so, so you're looking to sell these townhouses, except for?
That is correct. These would be constructed by Ryan Homes and, uh, sold, uh, to individual buyers.
And I noticed on page three of the narrative, I think it's page three, uh, that you, that you're building eighty-six, but you could handle a hundred fifty-eight. Is there any chance of you increasing that eighty-six to a higher number?
The hundred and fifty-eight was just a comment to show that the allowable density would achieve a hundred and fifty-eight. But it's not physically possible. You can see that we have, by our plan, demonstrated that compliance with your, uh, hundred foot setbacks, with the exception of the easterly side where we're going to seventy-five and your fifty-foot building to building separations and your other, uh, yard setbacks, uh, limit us to the eighty-six.
Okay, thank you, thank you, uh, but, okay. I, I don't have any questions, Mr. Victor.
I got a couple. If anybody else got something.
Go ahead.
Um, could you put that drawing back up again, that site plan, please?
Yes, is that okay, RJ?
Oh, yep, you can go ahead and do that.
Yes, sir.
First thing, huh, I assume you need to get a trash truck into this place to pick up everybody's trash?
Yes, sir.
How do the trash trucks turn around when they get to the end of the spurs off the main drag?
There's a hammerhead located here, 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 and here. So there is, uh, an appropriate turnaround space for all of those for, uh, picking up even, even the, uh, rear driveway here has a hammerhead at this location.
And that's big enough for them to get in there and do their three-point turn?
Yes, sir.
And can you tell me what the dark green and light green dots mean?
Trees. That's our landscaping plan. Sorry, I didn't make it more obvious.
Well, I didn't know if they were light poles. I we didn't know what they were.
We didn't, we didn't try to go to that level of detail, but I can tell you that the way the tree spacing is, is every other driveway and every driveway that doesn't have a tree would have a light pole. So we would be doing, uh, like a post lamp, uh, in the gaps. So it turns out that basically we're planting trees forty-eight feet on center and spacing the street lighting forty-eight feet on center is how we traditionally do these. But again, that'll be subject to review during the land development review process.
Right. Um, what's the sight line from Oak Ridge Drive up to, I mean, these units are sitting up above this, that development, right? Pretty significantly.
Yes.
Um, is there a buffer that goes along that back between them or what do they, I mean, they're going to look up and see the back of all these places? What, what happens there?
Oh, let's look at the topography. If you look at the topography lines here, they're about on the same level. They are not looking, if this house right here is on grade with us.
Yeah, but as you go the other way, it's not.
Here, this is higher, correct. And then when you get down to here, it's lower. So, uh, and, and then if we look at the aerial photograph, we have the dark green here would represent the existing trees that would remain on our property. And you may not be able to read it as easily as I can here, but here's the existing trees on some of the abutting properties. So there's a, there is a, uh, good amount of buffering that takes place. And because of the hundred foot setback here, probably off of this closest right here, this would be fifty to sixty feet. So from rear of house to the closest townhouse is probably about a hundred and sixty feet apart.
Okay.
There's, there is substantial separation between, uh, the Oak Ridge housing area and our development.
Is that existing tree line area pretty mature as in large or what are we looking at? I mean, I haven't been there, so I don't know what that current growth looks like.
Yes, it is mature.
Okay.
Yes.
But to the, but as you're going, I'm going to say left, I'll go say, so north, south on Oak Ridge, those houses will be sitting below. Going that way.
Yes, but look at their orientation. As you get further around the curve, they're not looking toward us at all. So.
Yeah, there's like three or four or five there. One, two, three, four, five, probably looking at you. Okay. Um,
Then the, uh, another question I had, and maybe this isn't the right time, RJ, if it is, let me, if it isn't, that's fine, but, um, you know, this is a, a lot of eighty-six townhouses, so we're talking about a lot of occupants here. Um, what's the, the traffic impact there as far as right turn, right in, right in, right out? I know when Mr. Mawwar presented this previously when it was single family, um, there were some concerns with sightlines and, and things like that going on there with, with the, the traffic volume and et cetera coming down Perry Highway. Um, is that part of this discussion now, RJ, or is that something that we deal with at another time?
Yeah, so, uh, in the full engineering and all of those details as to whether the traffic can work, usually that comes out in the actual land development review process. Um, however, the developer has already initiated with Mr. Victor, um, conversations with Pendot about how to access the site, you know, regardless of what zoning it might be. Um, and so, you know, they were gracious enough to, to invite me to the scoping meeting, um, which I think was maybe a month or two ago at this point. Um, and so from what I recall from that, Pendot was discussing right in, right out, um, and whether there would need to be a dedicated turn lane added for the deceleration.
And, and the, uh, end of the traffic study came back and yes, there would be a, uh, I think it's hundred and seventy-five foot long, two-hundred foot long deceleration lane, right where, right here where I'm pointing.
Right.
So, so that traffic, the, the situation is such that the traffic here is going downhill and moving fast.
Yep.
And so the deceleration lane allows for a safe pull-off for this and then accessing into the site. And obviously because of the center median barrier, the access would be a right out only.
Well, that would, but the other part was the ex, next acceleration lane. You know, somebody pulling out on the, you know, trying to leave the development can be overtaken very quickly by somebody coming down the hill there.
Yeah, uh, the traffic study did look at the site distance, looking up the hill. And, uh, my understanding is that an acceleration lane was not warranted uh, through the discussions, but it's not to say that that's not something that could occur, uh, a little bit down the road. uh, a little bit down the road. Uh, there is a um, large overhead sign right here. And it's got a big mounting bolt right there, and uh, it is sort of a, if you had to build in a acceleration lane for there, but uh, Pendot will tell us whether it is uh, going to be warranted or not.
Hmm. Okay, so, so that doesn't have any play then in deciding if this should be rezoned? At this point.
Unfortunately, it does not because we're not at that level, but I, I can, trying to make you feel comfortable that we have already initiated those discussions with Pendot and that we included uh, RJ in those discussions to initiate the process.
Okay. Uh, those are the only couple of questions I had right now, Ted. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Ted, I've got a couple. Uh, along those same lines, I, and I would strongly encourage an acceleration lane as well as a deceleration lane. Uh, but uh, also a public transport, eighty-six townhomes, you have some people there who might wanna take a bus. Is there gonna be an opportunity, and maybe this is premature, but an opportunity for a bus to stop somewhere near the beginning of that, or at the entrance of that lane there? So that some of those people could get on a bus and uh, be out of that fast-moving traffic?
Yeah, certainly with the deceleration lane, there is the opportunity for the bus to pull over into the decel lane and do a pickup there. Uh, there is a dual sidewalks on both sides of the street, so there would be a sidewalk. So that anybody who is taking public transportation can take sidewalks down to the bus pickup location.
Okay. Uh, I would strongly encourage some sort of bus access, or at least the study as to how that bus can work there.
Um, to be clear, like, those are, those are definitely good questions to add to this discussion, but we might need to involve court authority at some point.
Sure.
Comes to the bus routes. Um, that's just not something I've looked into yet, but we can definitely get more information if, you know, this moves forward.
At, at the south end of this property, it was mentioned that there was an old quarry and a fairly steep rock face. Uh, since it's gonna be this property, is there, are there precautions so that somebody doesn't walk off that on a dark night?
Uh, we are definitely not at that level of detail, but certainly there can be. It's not a problem.
Okay. Um, what is the relative cost of these townhomes?
Uh, Ryan Holmes is typically selling this particular model right now at about two-hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars a unit.
Okay. And RJ, as part of this development, do we require sidewalks along Perry Highway?
Um, hmm, usually we do require external sidewalks for the development. Um, again, uh, you know, not to anticipate what the applicant may or may not request, but I think that it's definitely worth having a discussion if they succeed in this rezoning and come back asking for a waiver. Um, I'm not sure that the grade of the road really permits that.
The, the problem, the problem is we have very limited right-of-way within which to cut a sidewalk area within it. Not to say that it's impossible, it's just limited. So what we have done is that our detention facility is located here, and we have an, there's an existing driveway that comes down the hill. So we would access that, and we would see that as being a trail that could then be extended and connect to this corner of the property. So we think that that system of trail would be preferable to a sidewalk along Perry Highway to come back up into the plan.
But, but that wouldn't do anything for someone who is not a resident of that plan, if they happen to be trying to walk along Perry Highway, and no one does now, and I can understand why, because they'd be killed. But uh, ultimately, our plan for McCandless is to have sidewalks, and I just bring that up is because it would, it's something that needs to be looked at.
Okay. We certainly would have no problem with the public utilizing that trail and these internal sidewalks for gaining access to. So.
Those are the comments I had.
Anybody else? I just want, had a question for RJ. Um, RJ, uh, written, uh, written notices weren't mailed to the uh, the abiding property owners at this stage, right?
No, we, we would be doing that for the public hearing before council, which has yet to be scheduled.
Okay.
Uh, the, the buffer between uh, Perry Highway and those units along the road, what, what, i- is that just existing tree line, or would there be uh, some evergreens or, or anything planted there?
The, this, these are existing trees. We were identifying those uh, for purposes of identifying where grading will or won't occur. We certainly would anticipate uh, that there would be additional planting along this hillside uh, between our rear driveway and uh, the existing vegetation. Yeah. Again, a, a detail for the land development plan, but it, it has been part of our thinking.
But zoning issue?
Well, that's the reason I pointed out the zoning map. The uh, where you can see the pattern has been to locate small isolated areas of R-three adjacent to primarily R-two. So I don't think anybody could say that this is a spot zoning for McCandless patterns and standards. Also, there is a fabulous court case that talks about spot zoning in which McCandless shines, and it's right here. In which of, it was challenged that that placement of R-three surrounded by the R-two was spot zoning, and the courts quickly threw out that challenge and said it is not spot zoning. Or was not. That was an historic thing years ago.
Lamar, you have any comments? She's still here?
He, he might be muted. Hang on, let me send him a microquest. I'm just gonna take the uh, slide down for now so I can see people better, but um, of course, Steve, if it warrants it, you can put it back up.
There we go. No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Everybody else? Uh, Kim?
Um, I'm familiar with this property, and um, it has come before um, many bodies proposing many things to um, try to get something developed here, and I, I appreciate that. And this seems to be much more user-friendly than some of the other proposed uses that I've seen in the past of this property. Um, the problem, the big problem that this property has and has is that is access. And um, if you know that part of McKnight Night, I know you do, um, it is if you wanna go on McKnight, you need to go right. If you're going to Perry Highway, you need to go left. Everybody change now. It's like the Fort pit, coming out of the Fort pit tunnel. Um, so there's a lot of lane changing going on there, and to have people trying to pull out there, and of course, there's only one direction that you can pull out there, which does add to safety. Is there any way that there is another access that could come from this property? Are there any other uh, possibilities? I see, is it severe lane?
Sarver.
Sarver, excuse me. Sarver, is there a way to access that? And I don't even know if that would be any safer, because it looks like it's closer to the split as opposed to further away. But then there looks like a road that kinda comes off sob, sober there, kind of at the end. Unless it's a driveway, it's hard to tell on this. Is there? It's a, it's a driveway. Okay, well, that wouldn't be good. Um, is there any, is there any other access that to this, that, that can be used on this property to stop that many people from having to fly out of there to get into very brisk traffic?
I think the, the, the easy answer is, we have explored it. The previous property owner, Mr. Marwa, uh, explored it for several years. He looked at trying to acquire various properties, including trying to buy a house on Oak Ridge Drive and come in Oak Ridge, which would have really set the town on fire. Uh, buying four houses and coming off of, uh, I think it's Forest View. Uh, we did analyze for him, Sarver, trying to convert that from private to public, that didn't work because of the elevation difference. He then uh, had even approached the town uh, for working with you to gain an access through Vestal Park. Which wouldn't have worked anyway because of topography, but uh, I can tell you, he, he worked for several, several years because previously, Mr. Marwa had received approval for a uh, single-family subdivision of the property. And uh, it was, it never could be marketed. It, it, there just weren't the buyers for uh, wanting to build single-family along that particular corridor of nineteen with that access.
So the, the short answer is no.
No. Yeah, well, on, it's an unfortunate no. We would love to have alternative means of access into this. I think it's a classic case of where municipalities today are now looking at interconnectivity and that somebody failed to look at that thirty years ago. It would have been so easy to have given us this particular property uh, an access off of Oak Ridge Drive, and uh, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else?
Uh, just, just real quick, what, do you know the number of units that are gained by reducing the setback from a hundred to seventy-five feet? Cause it looks just like in a southeast corner, northeast corner. You know, maybe if just, it's just, you know, a, a, a couple of units.
Yes, there's approximately, I, I think there's like three or four units. As it's currently drawn on. Yes.
Okay.
That will be a question. Uh, because if you rezone it, you'll be rezoning it with the hundred-foot setback. And then it would be up to the zoning hearing board whether there is uh, a hardship and we can uh, show merit to the variance.
And I, I just wanted to wait and give all the.
Can hardly hear you.
Uh-oh, okay. Can we hear me now? It'd be one of those nights, at least it's the last one for the planning commission. Um, okay. So, please tell me if I'm shapping it, all of you. I apologize if I um, I just, I wanted to hold my empty comments until, you know, all the commissioners and everyone got a chance to comment, so. Um, but I do have several thoughts on this, so I wasn't sure if we'd had, you know, if everybody had had the chance yet so far.
Go for it, go ahead.
All right, um, so, I, I think let's, let's start out with the positive, um, which is, I, I really, you know, to, to the council president's comment, I think this is a fairly user-friendly um, configuration for the range of things that could happen on a property of that size um, in McCandless. I think, you know, overall, it is good, a good planning practice to locate higher-density residences closer to faster roads. Um, that's definitely a real thing. Same times when it, same thing when it comes to commercial uses, y- you know, the more intense the use, it's usually better to put it near those, you know, high-traffic, more intense roads, right? They kinda go together. Um, that said, the number of units in this concept plan is a lot um, for a right-in, right-out. Now, um, I do appreciate, you know, the, the challenges is that that the previous owner went through, you know, there are some files in, in my office that I was going through that it tests to, you know, they, they've really been working to try and find another way to access the property. Um, I think that, given the state. Jonathan, I'll turn your mic back on in a second. Just wave when you're ready. Um, so, I, I think, you know, compared to having a, you know, a handful of single-family homes back there, again, the, the marketing issue was alluded to by Mr. Victor. Um, it would be a stretch, in my opinion, to anticipate, you know, a full single-family home neighborhood succeeding back there. But of course, that's on the developer to market the property as they say, see fit, so, you know, that's not necessarily a so therefore we have to rezonate, right? Um, all that said, I just have a couple of questions on the zoning aspects uh, that may affect the number of units. You know, again, of course, this is a concept plan, so you don't have to do the engineering. We're not necessarily saying you should at this point. However, um, I believe the, the original submittal that I saw, and I, I don't think this has been revised since, had fifteen-foot front yards. Um, so that would be another variance that would need to be requested. Um, assuming this plan would work, because the um, the front yard depth for R-three, including for any internal streets, private, you know, drive lanes, anything like that, from the front of the building to the curb, it's thirty feet. Um, so if, if a fifteen-foot is still being requested, then, you know, of course, that, that's cutting in half the required front yard. I, I, I haven't done the math to see how that might move units around, but you know, that might change the ultimate number um, that could be approved if, if you're still seeking that variance. Um, I also have some, you know, I don't wanna call them concerns, questions, points of interest for uh, the density calculations. This is something that came up in a recent R-three rezone that we've got on the agenda later tonight, um, with this gross lot area versus net lot area calculation. Um, to save everyone the pain of having to hear me go through all of that math, I'll just say, basically you gotta cut out the interior drive aisles, um, and half of any of your steep slopes. Um, hmm, my camera seems to not be working, but I'll just keep rolling with it. Um, anyway, so, uh, depending on exactly, you know, the, the, the flat acreage can support eighty-six units. Um, however, you know, I'd be interested to see how pulling out those deep slopes um, or pulling out the drive aisles, things like that, to get to that net lot area um, acreage might potentially affect the limited number of units. Um, I think that's everything I had on my list. I also just wanted to note, I had one resident that wanted to make a public comment on this, so before we move on to the next agenda item, if we can circle back to that. Um, I'm hoping everyone can still hear me, since my camera cut out.
You can hear you.
All right. RJ, are you saying that, that what they said in, that there's an allowable of a hundred and fifty-eight townhouses, but they're only proposing eighty-six? Are you saying the allowable one fifty-eight is incorrect? Or are you saying that the eighty-six may still not really be allowable because you're questioning the calculation?
Um, I'm saying that I can't be sure of the exact permitted units without further seeing exact acreage for the steep slopes um, and the square footage for the drive aisles, which, you know, understandably is not something that's presented on a concept plan that's typical. Um, it may well be that the eighty-six units fit comfortably, because if you're just doing, you know, fifteen and some change acres, times, I think it's fourteen um, units per, per acre. You know, that, that would probably shake out, so I think that was one fifty-six. Um, so it may well be that it doesn't reduce it lower than eighty-six units. I just don't know without further information. So if the units in particular are, uh, you know, a point of interest for anyone else in the group, that, that might be, you know, some good math for the developer to, to run as part of this process.
You, if you don't have it off the top of your head, could you send me tomorrow the section of the code that defines the calculation, and I'll be happy to run the calculation?
Oh, yeah, it's um, it's in the definition section of the code, so you have to go hunting for it a little bit. I'll send it to you.
Thank you.
Is that it?
That was all that I had to say. Um, yeah.
I, what I was just gonna say is that, uh, it seems to me that the, the major issue here is still the ingress and egress from this site, although all the other items are still very important. Um, I, I, I would have to see an acceleration lane and a de-acceleration lane for me to approve this. I don't know how anybody else feels about that.
And, and to be clear, that's part of the PennDOT review process. So, I mean, now, whether you want to deny the, the zoning, you know, because of concerns of that valid.
No.
They just may come back with a single-family plan with or without a deceleration and acceleration lane, just depending on what PennDOT, you know, ultimately scopes out.
Okay. I, I don't think we take any action on this, do we?
No, I, I, I mean, unless you would prefer to at this point, um, it's, it's, I didn't have a tentative motion on there, but it's up to the commission.
We certainly would like to see this keep moving forward if you need more time to consider, but if if the planning commission does not take action this evening, uh, would you still be moving forward to set a public hearing date, uh, in July?
Uh, let me think here. Um, depending on how fast we can get the, the rezoning ordinance drafted up, which we have to do to move to the public hearing point anyway. Um, I think we could, we could potentially hit the second meeting in July if we move really fast. Um, but we have to give the county at least thirty days from receipt of the draft rezoning ordinance before we can hold the hearing.
So there is an opportunity to return to the planning commission prior to the public hearing if they, if the planning commission does not want to take action this evening.
Oh, yes.
What, what more would be, would we be looking at next month that we're not seeing tonight?
Uh, is that to me or to RJ?
Either one.
For my purposes, uh, I would, uh, get clarification from our traffic engineer regarding the acceleration lane, because I know there's already going to be a requirement for the deceleration line. And I would, uh, run the density calculations, uh, as per your defined ordinance. So, I can do those things and I could have a response back to RJ in advance of his meeting for next month.
And then you would have, I assume, the, all the, um, items that you'll be requesting variance on also at that point?
Yes, we can do that as well.
Okay. All right.
Ted, I'd like, I'd like to see the revised dense, I mean, I'd like to see this density calculation, just so we have a real number of what the number of townhouses can be. It sounds like Stevens, you know, put on, uh, put a number on there that he likes, it, that fits or looks good or works right, but it sounds like what RJ says is that number could get tweaked based on this other calculation. Is that a fair summary of what I heard?
Yeah, I, I actually, I need to correct myself from earlier. I said fourteen units per net lot area acre. It's actually ten for the townhomes. It's fourteen for the, uh, garden apartments.
I, I think though, that if you, as I understand what RJ said regarding the definition, uh, I still get credit for half of the twenty-five percent and greater slopes. I get a hundred percent for all great, less than twenty-five percent slopes. And I can tell you, uh, there is only a small portion, maybe a quarter or less, that's twenty-five percent slope. So, I, I, I I can't imagine that we're gonna go through these calculations and it's gonna tell me that we're not gonna get to the eighty-six, but we will have that.
It's very possible that that will all still shake out to be fine, but just because of recent discussions we've had with R3 rezonings, I think it would just be prudent to know at the outset exactly how many could be gotten out of a property.
A- absolutely. No problem doing it.
Okay, then should we be tabling this?
We, we can, um, however, I did just want to give that, uh, resident the opportunity to, to make a comment if that's okay. All right. Let me, uh, bring her on. This is Colleen Lodge.
Hi, everyone. Sorry, uh, it's me again. Um, I did, I know that residents from this area are not, um, are not on because they're not aware that this is going on. Um, just a couple of notes for, for Steven. And also, I, I mean, I think maybe, I don't, I know there's a public comment period, but it, but there aren't any residents who are directly impacted by this, who are at this meeting, so that might be something to consider. Um, because it does impact them if this gets owned R3 when it's been one house uh, in the woods for a long period of time. The other thing is, I did notice in the, in the, um, uh, law grading plan that this, this, um, development does actually drain directly onto the, the lots that are on the other adjacent plan. I don't know if you're able to bring that up, Steve, briefly. If you look at the way that the, the gradient lines run, it does drain onto those properties currently. Um, so, because it's higher than them. Um.
That's not a, it's not an absolutely correct statement. It does, there is some drainage that goes in that direction. However, uh, we're not necessarily higher than them. The issue is that there is a valley between Oak Ridge Drive and the Marwa property for this portion of the site and both Oak Ridge Drive and them drain to the drainage swale that runs along the property. So, our water technically is not draining onto the homes of Oak Ridge Drive.
It's no, but it does could drain onto that drainage swell that is actually technically, like, it's partially on their property, so they may want to have some input into that. And then, as well, just a couple of things, like when you, if you do go to the, um, zoning hearing board, you have to demonstrate that you cannot develop to, uh, to get the variance. So, just as an FYI, uh, that is part of the township ordinance that you must prove that you cannot develop without the variance. So, I would not necessarily be counting on getting those variances that you're looking for i- if you can demonstrate that you can actually develop without them. So, uh, it may not be as many, um, properties, as many houses as you want to put on there, but if you're able to do it with four less houses and meet the requirements, then it's in all likelihood, they will not give you the variance. So, that's just a, a little bit of a tidbit of information. So, that's, that's all I wanted to point out, because I know that none of the local property people are there. Thanks, Sergeant.
They, the process, if I could, the process, the process is specifically designed by the, by the MPC that this stage is done, developer to planning commission, the public is welcome to attend, but there is public notice and public hearings held with the borough council. So, it, I would not want to give anyone the impression that the public will not be notified and the public will not have a full notice, an opportunity to speak at the public hearing.
I'm, I'm gonna just jump in here a little bit to speak more specifically to, to mechanless, um, although you certainly have the nail on the head with the MPC stuff. Um, so, just for, for everyone's edification, rezonings, um, have to be approved through a, uh, public hearing process through town council. They're essentially treated by the zone ordinance, which means that we have to send them to the county. We have to advertise them in the paper. Um, additional to that, once the public hearing is actually scheduled, which, as I mentioned earlier, is triggered by sending the rezoning ordinance down to the county. Um, we additionally directly mail to adjacent property owners a notice that the hearing is going to be occurring. So, no, we did not directly mail a notice to adjacent property owners that the planning commission is considering, you know, tendering a recommendation, but that's because the planning commission's action is not binding and it's ultimately up to town council. So, um, the adjacent property owners will certainly be notified when the zoning hearing actually occurs.
And under the charter, under the charter, don't you have to give the, uh, the public, um, notice of the, uh, of the, uh, the possible rezoning at the, uh, uh, from the, from the public, uh, uh, per, um, planning commission meeting?
Uh, we, we just have to put the agenda out there. That's the same for.
Six days before the meeting.
Yeah, right, which is why typically either Wednesday or Thursday, we send those out. Um, and, and get those posted. So, but in addition to that, you know, again, the planning commission per the charter puts the agenda out ahead of time. Um, but the municipality's planning code, which is, you know, for anyone who's not familiar with the acronym Alphabet Soup, um, the MPC, that's the state planning code that covers rezoning, subdivision approvals, all that good stuff that we do in here. Um, so the notice and public hearing requirements are set by the state. We follow them. They supersede anything that is less restrictive uh, in our code, should it exist. Um, regarding the zoning hearing board, there are a variety of criteria that are applied to any variance, whether it's residential or commercial for development, and I just don't want anyone to be given the impression that we are making a statement at this meeting as to the likelihood of approval of any variance, um, without proper presentation of testimony and evidence. So, we will consider any and all variances once we get to that stage.
Yeah, I, I just want to mention that's nine zero two, uh, the, of the, uh, charter of, of the, of mechanists.
All right, that was all that I had to add at the end there.
Hey, RJ, this is Dan. I'd just like to say something. I, I, I did do a little bit of communicating with Mike Haberman, the town traffic engineer. Uh, he states that, uh, the concern about an acceleration lane is that, uh, the preference for traffic engineers is that people actually look before they make a turn uh, to the right and make sure there's no traffic coming. He says if you create an acceleration lane, you encourage people to start into traffic and they may merge with other vehicles. That'll have to be decided by PennDOT, but uh, that's just his initial thoughts. It is a downgrade out of there. So you can move pretty quickly as you pull up. Just throwing it to the planning commission for, that's his initial comments. He hasn't seen a plan or anything yet. Uh, but just access is, like, like Ted mentioned, it's the most important issue. We're gonna have to defer to PennDOT. There's gonna have to be a trans, uh, a TIS study submitted and that'll spell all those things out.
Okay. Uh, should we, should we do again? Should we do a, um, should we table this for a month or should we just let it drop off the face of the earth? I can't hear you.
RJ, tabling is probably the proper legal venue, uh, in this one.
All right. Could we have a motion then to table?
Should we do that in a form of a motion or what?
Yeah. We would have a motion to table. Uh, is there anyone who would want to make that motion? Was that you, Lamar?
I got it.
Okay.
That's me, Lamar.
Lamar made a motion to table the, uh, application. Is there a second?
Second, yes, I'll second.
Dan, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Supposed? Okay.
Okay, we'll see you next month. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is eighty-five hundred Thompson Run Road Garden Apartments. There's three motions, uh, that, um, RJ has put down here that we're supposed to discuss. One is a motion to recommend the town, that town council approve or deny modification request number one to allow fill slopes of two to one as opposed to the code requirement of three to one.
I have got Mark Schmidt on here and I believe I, I sent a camera and microphone request to Don Pol. He may not be um, ready to hop on camera right now, but, uh, Mark?
Yes.
Would you like to update us with any details in the latest revision?
Yes, um, that is correct. Our, our one waiver request is for a two-to-one slope in lieu of the three-to-one slope. Our second waiver request is, uh, consideration of waving sidewalk on uh, Thompson Run Road. Uh, what we have provided in the interim since the last meeting is we have provided a sidewalk that would extend from the buildings down parallel to our entrance drive all the way to Thompson Run and then extend north on Thompson Run uh, up towards Duncan Avenue to the end of our property. Uh, as you recall, the pro- the problem that we have with the sidewalks is a grade situation where it's very steep down to the edge of the road and that occurs on the southern half of the property. So, we would ask for the waiver to be granted on that portion of the sidewalk that will extend to the south. Uh, the other changes, Nick, go ahead.
On the first item, the two-to-one to three-to-one slopes, do you have a drawing to show us where they occur?
Uh, yes, I do. Can I share a screen there, RJ?
Yeah, let me give you the ability to do that. One second. Okay, should be good.
Okay, um, the two-to-one fill slopes would be located on the westerly portion of the property, uh, right above Thompson Run and the two-to-one fills or cut slopes would be basically along the easterly portion of the property. Um, so those are the two major areas where we'd be asking for the, uh, the modification. The geotechnical reports supports that. There was a slope stability analysis for the cut and the fill. Uh, everything came back good on that with a adequate safety factor.
How do you stabilize that slope?
Well, it'll be.
The fill slope.
Yeah, it'll be stabilized with, uh, planting, um, landscaping and planning. And we're also breaking up the slope with a, uh, a six-foot bench about halfway up, uh, where we're gonna create a, uh, walking trail that would, uh, encircle the property.
Is that that red line?
That is that red line, yes. And the sidewalk that I was mentioning is shown right here. You can see my, uh, cursor.
Would there be any split rail fence or any kind of protection at the top of that slope to keep somebody from doing a tumble tumble down?
Yes, we have had discussions with, uh, with Dawn in regards to putting like a split rail fence or, uh, some sort of fencing along that trail on the lower side.
Not on the trail actually, but well, on the top of the hill also though, behind the resident, behind the buildings. So that somebody didn't take a long tumble down and hit the trail.
Well, um, the only place that, that, that part of the, if you're talking about this part of the westerly portion of, uh, building number one, um, it's, it is there. It's not really too accessible. The, the, uh, uh, patios in this area will actually be decks above the ground. Uh, this part will be open partially to the garage level. Uh, so there's not really a, a pedestrian, um, use in that area.
I mean, so nobody's gonna go out there and catch ball with their kids?
No, the recreation area is actually in this hatched area here and this hatched area here. Uh, this is not that big of an area.
It's flat. It's grass. I'm sure somebody will be doing something on it.
Um. I mean, if, if it's a concern, we could look at putting maybe a split rail fence or something on there.
It needs to have something.
I'm sure we'd agree to that condition.
That'd be my moment.
Any other comments?
Nope.
No other comments on that area?
Not on the slope part.
On the slope, on the slopes.
Yeah, I'm good.
RJ, any comments from you on that?
I, I don't have anything. I don't have anything further myself. Sorry if I'm repeating myself. Um, but, uh, I, if, if Mr. Geisroth is available, I would turn it over to him for any of the town engineers, um, comments. I, I believe last that we spoke, the GeoTech checked out for this one.
Yeah, RJ, to that, to that effect and for the planning commission, uh, the, uh, the geotechnical engineers report. The geotechnical engineers report did provide all the information that, uh, Mark had indicated. Uh, that the slopes will be stable and that, uh, it would support their requests for the modifications. Uh, so, um, the stability of those, uh, the fill slopes will be obviously keyed in and, uh, stabilized with jute matting. In addition to other vegetation that jute matting is typical on all the steep slopes. To reestablish vegetation in addition to the landscaping that they have proposed. Um, I can comment on other things related to the remaining comments on the review if you'd like, or we can just wait on that till you.
Yeah, let's, let's take them one at a time.
Sure.
I have a comment on the, on the fill slopes. Am I understanding it correctly that if we were to grant the two to one instead of the three to one? We're agreeing to a steeper slope, which then goes against us if we. Uh, as, and goes in the favor of the developer who says that it's then too steep to build a sidewalk. Um, it seems like we're contributing to the, the non sidewalk argument by allowing the two to one slope. If I'm understanding this correctly.
I, I would point out that the slope that you're talking about where the sidewalk is would remain undisturbed. That is not something we're creating. That's already steeper than, uh, than two to one.
Yeah, I, I would, if, if you look, Mark, I don't know if you can point on the map or who has the cursor, but. Uh, the, the fill slope in the area where the sidewalk is supposed to, they've asked for the waiver on the sidewalk. They really don't start that fill slope until they come up. To the level of the bench.
Between, this is the right away line here. This is the edge of the paving. There's a bunch of contours in there. Um, our fill slope would actually start up in this area, well above that slope.
Okay.
Okay, um. Anybody else have any comments? Kim, you have anything on that?
Not on the slope. Thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion then to, uh, recommend? The, uh, town council approve the modification request number one?
I so move with the condition that the fence be provided to protect.
Okay.
Along the uphill side.
Where, where any dangerous slopes exist.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
You're opposed Jonathan?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so real quick, just for administrative purposes, I've got. Um, I believe everybody's here tonight, so it would be six to one and the one in opposition is Jonathan. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, the second modification request is to waive the external sidewalk along Thompson Run Road. Comments on that?
Shouldn't that be clarified to say to the south of the driveway?
Yeah, that's, that's.
It is actually, it does actually say that, yes.
Okay, sorry.
Modification request is limited to the portion of the property that is south of the entrance drive.
In other words, the, uh, the sidewalk to the north is to be, north of the entrance is to be built, right?
Yeah.
Yes, we would propose that, yes. Sidewalk would extend from the parking lot down along the driveway and then extend north to the property line.
What, uh? Is that stippled area? Is that the actual, um, um, walkway?
Yes.
Okay, what is that? What is that other area? Between the paving and the stipple area. There's a little strip there of white.
That'd be grass.
Okay. I have mixed feelings on this. I do think that I would, I would really like to see a, uh. Sidewalk along the southern portion of this.
Well, what, what, what would we connect to? I mean, there's no, no sidewalks down there. I, I've traveled down there. There's no sidewalks on, on Thompson.
And there will, and there will never be sidewalks if we don't build sidewalks.
That's exactly right.
Sidewalks, period.
Well, I, and we, and we, and that is noted.
My, my problem in all of this is that, uh, if you don't start somewhere, you will never start.
Would it be a problem to have the sidewalk on the opposite side of the street there and, and, and foresee a crossing? Because that would alleviate the issues that we had before with that five-way, uh, up near Duncan.
Well, you can't have this guy do it because it's not on his property.
Okay.
So, I mean, I, I mean, the pictures he showed the last time. I mean, it was not very conducive to put a sidewalk there based on what I recall, pretty how steep that slope was going to the south.
It, it was. I, I do have those pictures.
Yeah, I mean, that.
I walked, I walked that property. I walked that side there and three quarters of the property is an easy sidewalk. Easy, it's flat.
I would agree with that.
And the, it would be maybe twenty-five percent of the last part of the property, which is steep.
Going to the south.
The, the, right, the further south you, right, the further south you go. That's right. But easily three quarters of it is an easy sidewalk.
I would, I would concur with that. We just didn't propose extending it down there if it wasn't going to go anywhere beyond that. Uh, to, to build that last part of the sidewalk, you would need a, a four or five foot retaining wall on that last quarter of the property.
Yeah.
How much of a retaining wall are you putting up above for your, um, trail?
Uh, we're not putting any retaining walls on the property.
What, what was it? You were cutting into the slope?
Uh, just a level area.
How wide?
Six feet.
How many feet of retaining wall are we talking?
Oh, I would venture to say seventy-five to eighty feet in that area.
Really that much?
No, I, no, it wouldn't be that much.
I, I didn't think it was.
No. It wouldn't be that much.
I just want to note that I'm, I'm getting a request from a council member in the audience to mention that the temple and pool are south of the apartment complex.
All right, I would, I would mention that, that the problem with the slope extends on the temple property also.
That is true.
So do you want, really want little kids walking along that Thompson Run Road, uh, on a sidewalk to get to the pole?
Yeah, they'll make a trail to be honest, but.
Yeah, they have a.
You know, this wouldn't. Yeah.
I think if they've got a sidewalk, they'll walk on it.
They will. They will.
Sidewalks are better on the other side of the road there though. I mean.
There's no question. They'd be better over there.
I mean, it's the grade, everything is, there's houses on that side. I mean, there's.
Well, there's no houses over there. That's the cemetery.
But I meant further south, I guess there's.
Yeah, further south there's houses and.
Houses right on the road. I don't know contextually, how, contextually how close they are to where we're at off the top of my head, but.
Um, yeah, building across the street would definitely be easier, faster and probably would cultivate a lot, you know, a, a sidewalk down the rest of Thompson Run. It would, um, encourage that, but. And any, and it, and looking at the map here, I'm just looking on Google. I'd say it was maybe at best, uh, forty feet. Um, I, I don't imagine it's more than that. Maybe four or five car lengths. To where it actually, uh, retaining wall. And even then, I'm not sure how tall that retaining wall would have to be. Um, there's a car there and how tall's the car? Like four and a half, five feet? If that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know. I just think a sidewalk would make a lot of sense.
And if we can compel. Developer to put a sidewalk on the opposite side of Thompson Run because it's not their property. Is there a way we can conceivably put some condition or a, a. Some kind of condition on a waiver or a waiver on a condition. Whereby if, if they would enter into a negotiation. With the cemetery and quite frankly, it doesn't look like that part of the cemetery is used for cemetery purposes. Uh, to, to get a sidewalk. Going at least from there up to the five-way intersection. Uh, you know, would that be possible as, as an out to say, look. Uh, we think you need to have a sidewalk on Thompson Run. If you don't want to go through the expense of the. Uh. You know, the retaining wall in the southern section of this property. You can get out of that if you put it across the street and do what you need to do with that property. Because we all, I think we all agree that the, the sidewalk is better placed on the west side of Thompson Run.
And just for historical, um, purposes here, I'd just inter- interject and please excuse me Brendan for interrupting you is that. That the cemetery was required when it made its last, um, improvements to put a sidewalk in. Except they said the sidewalk will go nowhere and they were given exception for having a sidewalk there. So this is what happens when people are allowed to not build sidewalks is here we are. And, but they should have put a sidewalk in along the property, but they were given, uh.
Yeah.
Part blown on that.
I, I'm just gonna take down, by the way, sorry, real quick. I'm gonna take down the screen share because it is getting a little hard for me to, to manage the meeting when I can only see four of you. Uh, but I, I did want to just check in with our town attorney here and see what his opinion is on about off-site improvement negotiations. Because I think that gets a little hairy.
I mean, there's nothing that we can do legally to require the cemetery to install a sidewalk. For this development, um, the property owner, the developer. They're certainly, um, able to approach the cemetery and discuss that as an alternative that may be acceptable to town council. Or this commission, but we really have no legal authority to require those off-site, uh, improvements. So, you know, that, those kinds of discussions and negotiations don't happen, um, overnight. So, um, unless there have been conversations that we're not aware of, then Mr. Schmidt could, uh, surprise us of, it might be. Uh, better for the group to focus on what we can control on this development than ideas about what we really can't control.
Is there anyone on council who's, uh, who's against us, uh, requiring a sidewalk? At this point, want to talk about that?
Um, are you asking me Lamar?
I'm asking, uh, the rest of council.
Yeah, I, I don't want a sidewalk going to the south.
Your commission, I should say, sorry.
Okay.
Well, I suppose we can simply take a vote on this. Um. There is a motion here to recommend town council approve or reject. Modification request number two to waive the exterior, the external sidewalk along Thompson Run Road. This modification request is limited to the portion of the property that is south of the entrance drive. I assume that this modification request is, is limited to the south of the entrance drive because they had already intended to put one north of the entrance drive.
That is accurate.
Uh, what Ted, uh, excuse me, one thing is that if you decide to waive, um, this modification, then I definitely, um. Would like the planning commission to consider a fee in lieu.
Yes, I, I strongly recommend in any case in which we waive sidewalks going forward, that we put a fee in lieu condition on them.
Would you remind me what the fee in lieu we can do? I was saying, are we allowed to do that?
Oh, oh, yeah. Well, that's definitely something that you could recommend as part of, you know, a condition of approving it. Um, the way that I, you know, we've only had a few major developments with waived sidewalks come through since I've been here, but. Uh, previously what we've done is we've taken essentially the quantities of construction. Um, so, you know, the lineal footage of concrete, uh, whether there would be grading involved could potentially be looked at. Definitely at least the quantity of size of construction for the sidewalk material specifically. Um, and then essentially the developers required to pay it before they close out. Uh, the project for the funds to be used for pedestrian improvements elsewhere in town as council determines.
I thought the council had to approve that change, make it legal. I didn't think it was just something.
They do. I mean, any of the things that this body does are just recommendations to council. Council has the ultimate. Authority to agree with you, disagree with you, do as they please. Uh, so. Uh, you know, you all should do what you think is best and, and make your best recommendation to council.
So Steve, that doesn't have to be in an ordinance anywhere? I mean, to so that a developer knows that that's a potential that we can just. I mean, it sounds like, kind of like, oh, so we're gonna do this now. I mean, it seems to me like that's something that should be. On paper somewhere that, you know, we're not negotiating what included, you know. How much, how do you figure that? How do you calculate that cost? I mean.
You, you all aren't, you're not negotiating anything here today, Rob. That's for council. That's for the town engineer. That's for. My office to work with the developer on that issue. If you want to make that recommendation, you know, we'll tackle the, in the weeds. Um, but, uh, you know, I don't think we need to get into those details, uh, for purposes of the planning commission today.
Okay, so we don't.
So to simplify this. No, I was gonna say, so to simplify this, we can just say, uh, recommend the town council to require. The, uh, installation of the sidewalk and see where the chips fall or maybe add on to that the fee in lieu.
You can, sure.
That was to Steve.
Is that, is the, is the fee in lieu of the sidewalk? Only come into play if we recommend that town council reject. The, uh, modification request?
That is accurate.
Okay, so, um. It, and, and that, that fee in lieu would be equivalent to putting in the sidewalk?
That, that would, I, I mean, I'll defer to the town attorney if he has any specific comments on that.
Why wouldn't we just put in the sidewalk?
Yeah, I agree.
Well, why indeed?
Well, let's, I, I think we need to vote on this, um. Is there a motion to recommend the town council approve the modification request number two? You can vote against it even if you make the motion.
I move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Um, all in favor?
Wait, what's this motion? What, what was the motion, motion?
The motion was to recommend that the town council approve modification request number two. To waive the external sidewalk along Thompson Run Road.
Oh, to waive it, sorry.
Yeah, the motion is to waive.
The motion is to recommend that we, that the town council approve the modification request to waive it.
Yeah.
Okay, let's.
No sidewalk, right? No, no sidewalk to the south.
No. Yeah, we're, we're, we're recommending that there not be any sidewalk there.
A, a yes vote means no sidewalk. A no vote means all sidewalks.
That's right.
There you go.
Okay, let's try again. Um. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Brendan, you vote?
Yeah, I'm opposed.
Okay, so that would be six to one?
Yeah, so Ted, you're also opposed, correct?
I am also opposed.
Okay, so it would technically be one to six in that case.
One to six, okay.
And that means that the, uh, motion fails, Harry.
Now, how does that affect the third motion here? The motion to recommend town council approve or reject the preliminary land. Development application for the rest of the property.
Oh, well, I suppose you could make a motion to, you know, conditional on the southern sidewalks being added. Or, you know, I mean, ultimately it has to be code compliant. Before it gets through approval at town council. That means that if they choose not to, um, accept the waiver, you know, if they follow the planning commission's recommendation. Then the plan would have to figure out how to put those sidewalks on there before it could be approved. Um. I don't know, Mr. Horrible, do you have a preference in how they potentially do this motion, given the sidewalk modification rejection?
Well, I mean, you were, you rejected the motion to waive it, so as far as I'm concerned. So as far as I'm concerned, then the requirement for sidewalks is is in the, they did not receive a waiver. They the modification wasn't granted, so the sidewalks must be installed. There's no reason to modify this motion unless you're trying to do something different like a fee in lieu, et cetera. So I, to me, I would just, if I were you, I would just punt that to council, let them decide how to proceed and just thumbs up or thumbs down on the land development application at this point.
So we were just proceed with the land development application recommendation?
Yep, that's the way.
Assuming that there is a, there is, there will be a sidewalk involved.
You did not grant the waiver, so they are required.
Okay. All right, then, motion to recommend town council approve the preliminary land final land development application for eighty five hundred Thompson Run Road garden apartments plan. Could I have a motion from somebody to do that?
Well, I apologize for interjecting one more thing. One of the things that we had asked for, and I understand finally was finally presented, was the traffic study. And I looked at it today, it came, I looked at the gateway engineering letter, which effectively approved, and that's my terminology, but they effectively agreed with the the original plan that was put out by the traffic engineers. Essentially saying that the traffic impact would be essentially non-existent. The 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 statement that just took me by surprise, frankly, was that this development would add on average one point two seconds at the intersection. Now, to me, that doesn't even seem feasible, candidly. One point two seconds is one Mississippi. That that I don't know how that works, that that's the only amount of increase that you will see waiting at that intersection. And what was not addressed, at least as I saw it, was not just the traffic going through that four way intersection, which might take one Mississippi more time. I don't believe it, but they say it does. What I don't think was addressed was traffic coming out of that intersection headed south on Thompson Run and trying to make a left hand turn into this new development. As you know, anybody who's traveled it, that traffic backs up, it backs up all the way to the pool. And if somebody is trying to make a left turn through that line of traffic, if the traffic does not grant them space just by being polite, then traffic backs up until the space is developed. And it will take about four or five cars by my humble estimation before that last car is virtually back into the intersection. And so what, that wasn't addressed, and I don't know how it should be addressed, but as a user of that intersection, that is my concern, that you've got a new get go gas station that was just developed on the corner in addition to the Mascaris gas station, which is already on the corner. You've got traffic trying to come in and out of there, now you add the traffic coming in and out of this new development, all at that intersection, none of which, as I saw it, was addressed by this traffic study. To me, that's where the problem is going to be, not whether or not it adds one second getting through the intersection on a straight cross.
Dan, do you have any comments on that?
I I would respectfully respond to Dan that I understand his comments. I'm not going to defend the developer's traffic impact study, which was prepared by his engineer. I will tell you that typically traffic engineers develop scopes of studies and those scopes of studies always focus on intersections. So I believe that in in the in the actual look at the project is based upon the peak hours that the development is going to generate the traffic. And the the look is really at this, the level service that's provided at intersections. The the comments you have related to other other items that can occur with turning movements are are valid, but I I don't think that there's enough traffic from this development to require any sort of a turning lane into the site, which I think you're alluding to on on Thompson Road. I would, if if that's a question you have, we can ask the developer to provide more information on that. I'm glad to, I I just don't have the ability, as I said, what I think Michael reviewed, our traffic engineer, he reviewed what was submitted and he didn't have any disagreements with it. If you have other traffic concerns, I think they're valid and open questions to the developer and his engineer.
Can I ask what our quarter, what our course of action would be, even if it came back, that it was another, say, ten seconds? Would we then reject it?
Well, if it's if it's ten seconds, if it if it increases as as you can, if you looked at Mike's letter, it's the overall intersection is is level service D during the AMP car. And it looks at a future design year without, with and without the development. And it's level service E, so it does increase. It increases by one point two and one point four seconds. It's less than the ten seconds that that are required to cause mitigation. So if if the the delay was ten seconds or greater, there would be mitigation required by the developer. That could be a turning lane to keep traffic moving, it could be adjustments to the lights. It could be any any variety of improvements. I will comment that this is a county road also, so the county really has final say on any driveway permit or what's permitted to happen here. Do I think that they'll comment more than the town? They're not the same as Pendot, to be honest with you, the county. The county does not look at their roads with the same intensity level that the Department of Transportation does. So again, if this is, if this is a comment that you guys have and a concern you have, we only got the traffic report and the ability to get this letter out last week, so your your comments are valid, I I can't can't argue with them, but I think what they'll come back and say is that that they're not, again, that they're not, they wouldn't require mitigation, that that's my point.
And I'll just jump in here, they're they're, these issues are not legally relevant, they're immaterial and they would not provide a basis to deny the plan at the council level. I mean, we're basically, Mr. Corbin, we're talking about the courtesy of drivers headed north to allow someone to make a left, you know? That's not what these traffic studies are designed to to review. I mean, those those situations exist right now, turning left into the gas station, turning left into the temple and to the swim club, so that's just not a, there there may be additional vehicles that are trying to turn up there because of the number of units, but it's just not material from a legal perspective.
From a grand scheme.
Just to to counter your your comments, you know, the only time they, for the most part, the only time they turn into the into the temple is not during rush hour traffic and or on a weekend is when they might be turning into the temple. There's no one turning.
They have events up there that occur during the week, you know, it's not, I understand the services are on the weekend, but they do have things that go on up there. The swim club is open in the summertime, et cetera.
And the swim club has a light.
And I'm not saying that those issues are the reason why it's immaterial, it's just that these traffic studies, as Mr. Dizeroff mentioned, they're designed to, you know, weigh the intersection and whether they're failing or et cetera. And and the courtesy of a driver to allow a left turn is not something that so I'm I'm just trying to be as upfront as I can, I understand the concerns. As a as a motorist, I would share the concerns, but it just doesn't give us a legal basis to really do anything about.
Well, I guess I'm disappointed that the traffic study didn't take that into consideration, because to me, that's traffic, not just the the intersection forty fifty feet away. But I'll I'll, I'm not a traffic engineer by any stretch, and if they say that there's no impact, who am I to say otherwise, other than as a user, I don't believe it.
Yeah, Dan, I I, and the only thing that I'll I'll say is that they're really, in the grand scheme of things, forty eight units, although they're talking about a hundred and thirty trips, it's not, you know, in my experience with turning lanes, you know, those evolve around units when there's several hundred units. So I I again, I just don't think it would trip the requirement. And again, you know, traffic engineers look at things based upon the standards that they're given. They they all work with the transfer, the IT manual, and it's sort of a gospel that, you know, one engineer prepares the things, the other one reviews it versus that. There's not a lot of gray in it, it's it's black and white, and and you know, these are, these are the things that they look at. So again, I'm not defending the study that was prepared, other than it was prepared in accordance with typical traffic engineering standards. And that's what we go by.
Understood, I think you know my point.
Sure.
Anybody else? Okay, I guess we're ready for a motion, is that correct, RJ?
If you all are ready, then I'm ready.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Public comment, did you take public comment, Ted? Is there anyone in the public?
Oh, thank you, Greg, that's that's a great point.
Let me give you also a site to modifications on sidewalks. It's thirteen sixty one point zero six, thirteen sixty one point zero six is a site that deals with modifications. I think it's an AMB, I think it's B, but thirteen sixty one point zero six.
Okay. Do you have anyone who has comments, RJ?
I I did not have anyone sign up previously. I found a couple of people later for Pine Creek, but not this one.
Okay. All right, then, can we have a motion to recommend town council approve the preliminary final land development application for eighty five hundred Thompson Run Road?
So moved.
Who is that?
Was Rob.
Rob, okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
No.
Hi.
That opposed?
I'm gonna oppose it.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll vote in favor of it. Who who voted in favor? Let's let's do this, hold your hand up so I can see your hand. One, two, three, four, okay?
And I I think I think Mr. Wacaskas as well, he just doesn't have his camera on.
Oh, yeah?
And we got three against, is that right? Four in favor, three against, is that correct?
Well, I'm against, I don't know who else is. I'm against.
Jonathan is, and Greg is, is I assume.
No, he's not, Greg was for it.
Oh, he was for it? Are you for the motion, Greg?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's five to two, all right.
Okay. And I have recorded for opposed, Mr. Hall and Mr. Corbin, did I get that right?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. The next item is to preserve at Pine Creek Residential Subdivision. Motion, the motions that we're supposed to consider here is a motion to recommend town council approve or reject the modification request number one to waive the external sidewalks along Minor Road. And a motion to recommend town council approve or reject the preliminary final subdivision plan application. So who's going to speak about this, RJ? Are you gonna start?
Yeah, so I've I've sent everyone that I see on here from the developer side, a mic and camera request. So if if you haven't unmuted now, just send me a chat message or have one of the others tell me to unmute you later. As we've all seen this plan, you know, come back a couple of times, it's been through quite a few revisions. I just wanted to report to the planning commission that on, let me give the exact date here, I think it was May twenty fifth. The town facilitated on one of our Zoom accounts, a discussion between the developer and several of the residents that have been regularly attending these meetings to provide public comment. It was extended to basically everybody's email that I had from the groups that had been in communication, putting in write to no requests, things like that, to see the plans. I believe we had, I want to say, three residents, at least two of whom are are here tonight as well that that were part of that discussion with the developer, and I I just, I think it was very productive. But certainly the residents may have, you know, further comments later on, I have a few signed up already. Beyond that, Tyson, if if you would like to, if you have any plans that you want to screen share or whatever, I have given you the ability to do so.
Okay, let me give you a moment, I'm bringing that up. In addition to the aforementioned meeting that we had with some of the neighbors, I do also want to state that we've also had some additional meetings with town staff, with the engineer, RJ, and the manager regarding stormwater management in general and the potential for the town to acquire some of the property to perform a future flood control project, which easily if we want to talk about that. But the reason why I bring that up is because, you know, as RJ mentioned, you know, this plan has gone through a number of iterations and those are largely driven by the the town process and some of which, you know, includes the input from the neighbors. So for instance, as you may recall in the previous iteration, there had been some changes to the lot grading, which affects one of the neighbors, you know, so that was pulled back a little bit. You know, stormwater management was the focus for many of the neighbors. And so we've, you know, revised our stormwater management plan. One of the other comments really that came from Gateway's letter was to look at this private driveway and make sure that it's in harmony with what both the the engineer and the fire marshal would like to see. And so, you know, we've made revisions to widen the road slightly and put a curb in based on that. So by and large, you know, most of the engineering comments or a large portion of the engineering comments were addressed. We just did receive a revised letter late last week and there's a a couple of outstanding comments, which I'm sure we'll probably go through, but I think fairly technical in nature that we believe we can address with with Mr. Dizeroff and Gateway. So but just to give everyone a recap, you know, previously, we had a double loaded street. And then in the iteration that you saw previously, which you didn't take, which we, you know, didn't have action on, we had revised the lots to just be on on one side, so. Just give me one more moment here and I will bring this up. But is, well, let me, like, this will talk about this storm.
Is your mic working, RJ?
I'm just checking in to make sure that I haven't skipped or frozen, is Tyson pulling up plans or am I?
I I am, RJ.
Okay, just checking.
It's just not cooperating. There. Can you see my screen now?
Yeah.
Yes.
So this is a concept plan, and I want to reiterate this is just a concept and and just for to facilitate the discussion between the town and the developer. But essentially, the developer has agreed to make provisions for the town to acquire this portion of property, which is approximately five acres, for the town to develop a flood control strategy, which would benefit all Pine Creek. So the stormwater management for our site, you know, is a So the stormwater management for our site, you know, is in compliance with the ordinances. Uh, but going above and beyond that significantly, you know, is, is a financial burden to the developer and therefore we were trying to find an alternative solution that makes sense, you know, to, to be able to acknowledge, uh, the residents' concerns, both the neighbors here and all as well as ones downstream. And, uh, this is the vehicle that, you know, we've decided we're kind of moving towards. And so, uh, so, you know, this is not the, the final plan by any, uh, stretch of the imagination. That's something that, uh, the town and Gateway will develop over the course of time. But I just wanted this to, uh, again, mention that those conversations have went in a positive direction and, and draft agreements have been exchanged on that. So, um, we can take specific questions on that, but I would like to talk about the sidewalk modification, just in light of the, uh, light of the conversation you just had on the other development. So we are asking for a modification of the sidewalk along Minor Road. Uh, we are providing sidewalks along Pine Creek. I'll bring up a drawing here in a moment. Uh, but the, the main issue that we have is that there is a stream running parallel to Minor Road. There's a pretty steep drop-off from the road behind the guide rail down to that stream. So there would be significant environmental permitting, uh, which quite frankly, may or may not be even approvable by, uh, by the appropriate authorities, whether that's the Conservation District or the DEP. In this case, due to the entire length of that stream that would be affected, it would actually uh, be approved by the DEP as a joint permit and we're trying to avoid, uh, avoid that. So that's the, the reason for, um, for this modification in this area is just purely due to these existing topographical constraints uh, related to that stream. So again, that runs the whole length of the eastern side of the property. One second, I'm gonna pull up the drawings here. Okay, so again, um, this is the revised site plan that was submitted in May. Uh, as I've mentioned, some of the changes included widening the road slightly. Uh, adding a curb on the downstream side, uh, based on some of the planning commission member comments uh, from the previous month. We did make these kind of pull-off spaces a little wider to accommodate a, a larger vehicle or multiple vehicles. As a result of having the curb on the downside, um, there, um, uh, the stormwater management approach changed slightly, whereas previously we had a swale just below that, uh, the roadway, and now we have a, a series of, of inlets and pipes. And I'll bring up the grading plan in a moment. That's the change. One of the other comments in the letter previously was to do a tree inventory, which we had done a kind of sample study area, uh, to determine the, uh, approximate density of the trees on the property. Go to the grading plan. So again, based on some previous comments, uh, relative to some of the property owners on Sudbury, a retaining wall, uh, has been added to this lot here, which pulls, uh, the grading up, you know, uh, from, from further up the hill, uh, which is where it was in the previous design. So that, that's been pulled back about forty or fifty feet from where it was before. A, a fence has been added, uh, at the top of the cut slope, uh, for fall protection. Again, as in the previous iteration, but compared to one of the ones last fall, uh, this fill slope is, is a three to one and this cut slope is a two to one, so no modifications are required for that. Again, just to reiterate what I had mentioned a minute ago about the, uh, about the sidewalk modification. Again, you can see that, uh, stream running along this entire length of Minor Road. Let's see. I think that kind of hit some of the major high points. Uh, again, real quick about stormwater management, uh, you know, as that design progressed, uh, the size, the relative size of the stormwater management areas that we're proposing, a smaller one here and a larger one here that extends onto the other page, uh, did get bigger, uh, you know, which again helped fuel into the concerns of the neighbors relative to stormwater management in general. Just to reference, uh, the, the area compared to what was shown on the sketch from Gateway, you can see this, this approximate area below our toe slope that is proposed to be unused by the development. You know, roughly corresponds to that previous drawing. But yeah, that's the, the general overview based on the, the changes in the letter. As I said, there are a couple, a couple of other items in the letter. Uh, there are certainly other approvals that are in process, uh, like Penn Knot for the see here. And NPDS permit and some environmental permitting, uh, you know, those other type of approvals are also in process. So, uh, we can turn it over to, to Dan or to RJ, um, or answer any questions from the commissioners.
RJ, do you have any comments on this?
Uh, not beyond what our, the town engineer is going to add. Uh, at this point, I really defer to, to him for any, um, stormwater geotech comments.
Uh, members of the planning commission, I have reviewed the revised plan. I think that, uh, the key item that, that, that my concern was the driveway. I believe Tyson, before you had a nine-foot wide driveway. Uh, the turnoffs did not allow for approaches. Uh, there was no curb on the low side. So I know you did speak to Dan Stack, the fire marshal. I confirm with Dan that he would be comfortable with a ten-foot wide road uh, with the, uh, one-foot, uh, bituminous curb and then a one-foot berm, uh, as it's proposed to service lots five through ten. Uh, I still have concerns at the intersection of Minor. Uh, I know you've widened the radiuses out a bit there. Uh, but I'd like to see some auto-turn movements to make sure that we can get, uh, moving trucks, uh, garbage trucks, uh, construction vehicles to make that left-hand turn in there without going off of the, you know, off into the, into the mud or, or somewhere else. It's gonna be a busy little piece there. And, and my, my comment was that if somebody's trying to wait to make a left in there, somebody's sitting in the intersection, uh, it could get a little bit confusing in there. Uh, so even if the first fifty feet was just wide enough, Tyson, that you transfer, then you transition down to the singular lane, that you at least enough place, at least have enough for a car or two to stack there. I know it's not going to be multiple vehicles, but there is going to be occasions where there's one vehicle trying to turn in and the other one's going to be sitting right in the middle of the ten-foot wide drive.
Sure. And, and let me just, uh, interject Dan. So we, we, I know we had discussed that previously. Uh, and the reason we didn't show that is because, um, that will require a lengthening of the culvert. So it is something that we are happy to explore with the Conservation District and/or the DEP to, uh, to get an additional permit for that extension, as Dan probably knows, but that's a GP eleven more than likely, but possibly, uh, it could be done under GP seven. So that is something that we will explore.
And it's not, it's not a joint permit. It's not a, it's not a-
It, it shouldn't be because it wouldn't exceed a hundred feet. This existing culvert would be, but, um,
We're a hundred acres up slope.
Correct. Yeah. So I don't believe that it will, and it may actually be even waived to be, to be quite honest. So that is something that we will explore and, and we will work with your, your office and, and RJ to, uh, to improve that condition.
Yeah, I, I think, I think one, if they can make it into the site safely, I think there, the additional width and the turnoffs are at least enough to satisfy, uh, the, the town fire marshal, which I was most concerned about. The turnaround's okay. So I, I, I think that that was, you know, that was the biggest concern. Um, there has been a lot of back and forth discussion regarding the geotechnical comments. And, uh, KU Resources has provided some revised information related to the walls, the slope stabilities and so forth. We're still working through some of the minor details of that, but we're, we're much more comfortable. It's just the construction details related to some of the keyways and stuff that they just need to nail down. And, uh, we're, we're, like I said, we're working with them, uh, on those. Uh, the walls will have to be submitted as a part of the grading permit application and they typically come, uh, when the, uh, construction is ready, they'll submit a set of final, final retaining wall plans and they'll have to be sealed by the engineer that's providing the wall. So that'll be addressed there. And then on the, uh, stormwater side of things, uh, there, there's still a couple of minor items on stormwater. But, but I think for the most part, uh, they addressed the, uh, the major issues that we're comfortable that, that, that they'll be okay. I did have some discussion with Tyson as related to handling some of the drainage on the lots. Um, just that there'll be some drainage coming off of those slopes and whoever asked to build those homes, they need to be aware that they're gonna have to mitigate the drainage, bring it around uh, the site and bring it to the road, uh, to get it into the, uh, stormwater system. And I think we're gonna take care of that with some notes. Um, traffic, uh, on this one, there's HOPs required, uh, on the lots that are along Pine Creek Road. Uh, they're gonna have to take care of those. Uh, there's PENDO requirements, uh, related to some guide rail issues there that still exist. And then there's, uh, there's a number of general comments in my letter. A lot of them are third-party permits that they're going to have to obtain or that are in process. And, uh, uh, regarding the, uh, the request for, uh, any modification to the town design standards, I, I think we've kind of worked through that, uh, that between RJ, myself and the solicitor, that there that, that they would, that, that this layout is conducive to what they're asking for. Uh, it's, it's allowed for in our ordinance. Uh, so I think with that, I'll just open it up if there's any questions for me. That's sort of the highlights.
Do you have anything to add, RJ?
I, I really don't. I think that Dan and I are on the same page here.
Okay. I, I have to admit that I missed a couple of meetings, so I don't, I don't, uh, or missed a, a meeting, I should say. So probably you discussed this, but are those property lines that I see that are L-shaped?
That's correct. Yeah, we have talked about, um, the terminology, they're called flag lots. Uh, so the way that we've set them up, you know, it is compliant with the zoning ordinance, uh, that each lot has ninety-foot of frontage, as you can see here. Long, to make a long story short, we wanted to present an approvable plan that did not require any additional variances at this time. Uh, but it's something that we would consider working, uh, continuing, working with the, with the town uh, at a later date to, to make those more conventionally shaped lots. But again, as of right now, it's a compliant, that's a compliant plan from the zoning perspective.
So you'll have four or five people cutting the grass right along the road there? Is that what you're saying?
Well, that's all pretty existing shore vegetation if you're all looking at the trees. So I don't think that you would, I don't think anyone's going to be cutting the grass over here. Uh, so, you know, probably a portion of this lot, ten, uh, but yeah, these lots, five, six and nine. It's, it's very steep there. I would not see that typical maintenance more than likely wouldn't be happening there.
Good.
And if, if the town does come to an agreement with the developer related to the dedication of the, of the acreage that Tyson described earlier, uh, it's gonna require a modification of this plan. And it would, I, I assume it's gonna need to come back before you guys, uh, if that occurs, uh, to, to bless that plan as revised.
The, the plan of lots, hopefully. Yeah. So we wanted to hopefully get through the engineering-
Plan of lots, it'd be through the development, but they may need to make a revision to the actual, uh, plat.
Yeah.
Which, which in that case, I mean, my recommendation with the, the, the lots be more conventionally shaped, Ted, as you're probably used to seeing without the flags.
Yeah.
And I think that, I think that what we've discussed in terms of our code, it allows for that to occur. We just have to work out the details of that.
Okay. Okay, the first item on here is a motion to recommend town council modification request, approved modification request number one to waive the exterior sidewalk along Minor Road. This seems like the same problem we had on the last one.
Why, why don't you look into, uh, getting a modification, uh, you know, to, uh, lieu of the sidewalk.
Say that again, Greg?
Yeah, using that, uh, code section I gave you, thirteen sixty-one, I think, uh, uh, would allow you to, to allow the town to get to use the modification uh, in lieu of sidewalks. Maybe use that. That looks, that, that place looks awfully, uh, risky to me.
I was gonna say just the opposite. It looked like there were a good bit of space there between the edge of the road and where it starts to drop off.
Yeah, we said about, you said that about sisters of, uh, at St., uh, along Batcock and they ended up going halfway through their cappins to put a sidewalk in.
It, it's, it's, in addition to the, to the potential usable space, the issue is that we would be adding fill into the floodplain, which would be a permitting issue. So my suspicion is that the DEP would not allow us to put fill in the floodplain for the purposes of the sidewalk.
We still have the same problem is that, you know, if we don't put a sidewalk in here, then it hardly makes sense to put sidewalks anywhere along Minor Road. But Minor Road is, as you go up the hill, gets more and more, um, developed. And probably should have a sidewalk.
Do they have any sidewalks on Minor Road? No?
I don't think so. I don't know.
Not that I'm aware of, at least not in this section along our development or down towards Pine Creek.
Well, what, what's your comments?
Well, my comment is that I don't, I mean, we, we think that the, we might have some trouble because of fill into the floodplain or the, into the, into the waterway, but we don't know that. It seems like we ought to require or request that they put the sidewalks in and then they have to come back and tell us why it's either impractical, impossible, or overly expensive or something. And at which time we can decide whether something in lieu of a sidewalk makes sense. But I don't see how we can do anything other than request it in keeping with our philosophy that we want sidewalks.
Correct. I agree.
Agreed.
Anybody else have a dissenting opinion?
Um, I, I just want to mention, because I, I had several residents that have direct messaged me to note there are sidewalks on Minor. I am going to pretend that we had a chorus of voices shouting from the audience in the room, there are sidewalks on Minor. And mention that comment.
Are they north? I mean, are they, are they up the hill from there? Is that where they are?
Kind of ended ten, one fifty-one, which is up the hill. It's, it's a fair distance down to this property, but it-
What is to the north of this property directly?
Oh, I see them.
Um, the, I believe that leads into the, the Sudbury neighborhood.
And are there sidewalks in the Sudbury neighborhood?
Uh, I will have to look on Street View, although I am sure the residents-
Yes, there are. Yes, there are.
Well, my feeling is that we should require them on here then also. Or at least not, um, recommend that it be waived by council.
Right.
Uh, since this is specifically a motion, would anyone like to take public comment upon it? So that the residents that are throwing out the sidewalk info can maybe enlighten us a little further.
Do you have anybody on there that, uh, can do that?
I'm, yeah, I've got, um, Colleen Lodge has, has offered, um, to speak. How about, how about we do that? And then the other couple of people that are messaging me, I, I have you down for public comment on this plan in general, but if, uh, Colleen doesn't cover whatever you would have said, you can let me know and I will queue you up for comment as well.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Colleen, I am gonna send you a mic and camera request.
Hi, um, I'm Colleen Lodge and-
Hi, um, I'm Colleen Lodge and I, I do live on Sudbury Drive, um, just, just north of the development. There are sidewalks on Sudbury and also there are about, um. Maybe five to six houses south of the Sudbury intersection that do have sidewalks. And then as well, north of the Sudbury intersection, there's, uh, one or two houses that have sidewalks as well. I, I agree with Tyson that there is a stream there, but I would like to see if there's a way to connect that. The people who will be moving into the subdivision, we're the nearest street for them. So when their kids wanna go trick or treating, they'll probably come up to our. Little loop that we live on and as well, if they wanna walk their dogs and stuff, you don't really have far to go. If you're in a single pay, uh, single private drive. Now, they're not gonna head south onto Pine Creek Road because it's too busy. It's not really safe. But I do feel like if there is a way to get a sidewalk in feasibly, that connecting it up to that existing one would make sense.
Mike, I, I certainly understand the sentiment. My biggest concern is the timing of that. If it requires a joint permit just for the sidewalk. That can be an eighteen month to, to, to twenty-four month permit, just to get that one piece, which, um. Obviously delays everything, which, which would, would be. Unacceptable to, to, to delay it. Because of the sidewalk. So we can certainly explore it. I'm happy to have a meeting with the D E P to discuss it. But if there's a way somehow to detach that process from the overall approval. Uh, I think we need to do that just from a timeline perspective.
Dan, have you looked at this at all?
Uh, I've not looked at the issue relative to the permits for the, that will be.
Well, I mean. Does it seem feasible to build the, this, um, sidewalk with the exception of the area he's talking about?
Uh, I would say that anything is feasible, Ted. It's just a matter of cost. You know, some, there's gonna be requirements or maybe some pieces of wall here and, and other little things, nuances that haven't been, I don't think that Tyson studied them either. In, in detail because this, you know, the, it, it, to me, the length of the sidewalk is, I mean, there's, there's a lot of sidewalk to put in here.
There is a lot of sidewalk, that's true.
So there's, there's a question of, uh, you know, where, where can it be put in and where can it be put in? I, I would just say to, to defer to Tyson's issue. Uh, the, the plan could be put in with a recom, or you could, you could approve the plan with the, the recommendation that, that it includes sidewalks. But the, the sidewalks would have to be, you know. The, the issue of when the sidewalks are put in, uh. Is, is not, I mean, if, if their issue is timing that they wanna get started with the development. As long as it's required and included in the developer's agreement, typically sidewalks are put in after the homes are built. So it could be way down the line. So that, that the timing issue could be worked out and, and I'm not sure of, of what the, all the issues are. But I understand Tyson's dilemma related to encroachments and what impacts they might have.
Any other comments? Jim, you have any comment on this?
I just wanted to throw this out there. I mean, I know this is not like a planning item, but it is a thought. However, those lots end up shaking out, whether they still have to keep, you know, the ninety-foot frontage on the street. Or whatnot with those flag lots. Presumably, somebody is going to have to shovel those sidewalks. So we should probably just think about the weird lot lines and how we might wanna handle that. Or if they'd come back for a plan revision and then, you know, somebody else gets, like, there's not gonna be an HOA, I presume. In this situation unless, you know, Tyson or, or Mr. Adamak have. Further information that there will be an HOA. Um, somebody's gonna have to shovel them.
Well, I mean, that's a good point. If we reconfigure the lots and that's one or two property owners, yeah, they're gonna have, you know. Five, six hundred feet of sidewalk to shovel, which is.
Now, go put it heated. That's not a problem, is it?
Yeah.
Say that again.
Despite the.
I said, go put in, put in heated sidewalks. Problems. Oh, my God.
Drill a geothermal well to provide the heat, too.
Nice.
Yeah, like I said, I, I, I'm happy to explore, but there is certainly cost and timeline impacts to it, you know. So I don't know what the, the burden of. You know, the relative cost per lot or, you know, I mean, to, to determine when it's financially infeasible to do it. Um, so, you know, that's something I can certainly work through with, with RJ and Dan. You know, but if that's something we can work on on a staff level, if, you know, I, I, I just don't think it's gonna make sense financially, quite honestly. I'm not just saying that because that's advantageous to us. I truly think that it's from, both from a permitting perspective and a practicality perspective. It's, it's going to be difficult to do. But again, we're happy to look into it, uh, and work with staff to see, you know, what we can do a- about it. But I, I just, if, if the, if that developer's agreement can be worded to such, it at least. Includes, includes a clause about practicality. I think that that, uh, that just only makes sense here just because of the limitations.
Any other comments? Okay, let's, uh, vote on this motion then. There's a motion on the floor to recommend town council approve the modification request number one. To waive the external sidewalk along Minor Road. So it's like the last one, a yes means there'll be no sidewalk. Is there, is there someone who is willing to make that motion?
I'm willing to make that motion. So moved.
Okay, is there a second? Who is that? Oh, Greg, okay. All right, all in favor?
All right.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Do, do I have it right? It's at one to six?
Uh, yes, I, I think you've got it. Mr. Wokaskas, were you the lone yes?
As far as I can tell, I mean.
Yeah, I, I think I saw everybody's hands. Um, so I'm, I'm gonna go with one, six, unless anybody, uh, tells me I have gotten that in error.
Okay. All right. Then there's, uh, the second motion is to recommend town council approve the preliminary final subdivision land development application.
And, and we do have a couple of public comments that I know are signed up on this for sure. So before we wrap the discussion up, we wanna make sure.
But first of all, I, I just wanna ask Dan the, uh, question. I, I reviewed the, uh. The Ms. From the Pl- Planning Commission meeting for April sixth, two thousand twenty-one. And I noticed that, uh, Rob Gartner had asked, asked you, uh, if the stormwater management plan looks adequate. Yes, and then, uh, your response was, uh, that, uh, Mr. Miller was, was a civil energy. Engineer for the project will have to size the sumps to make sure that they have enough volume. And connect those into the same sort of overflow for, for them. And another comment you had was, uh, Dan was, uh, springs, there's springs on the slopes and hillsides. And how to collect that runoff and, and natural water. Uh, has, has that been resolved? Has, have those two issues been resolved? I'm really concerned about the stormwater.
Yeah, Tyson, do you wanna give an overview on that?
Yeah, on the, on the first point, um, as I had mentioned earlier, as part of the change to the overall roadway configuration. And adding curbs and inlets and piping, we're able to connect each individual rock sump on lots five through ten. Directly into that, uh, stormwater system that's in the private driveway, which then in turn connects into the two stormwater management areas. I showed you on the plan. So I do believe that that comment has, uh, has been addressed. Uh, relative to this, to the second, um, you know, that's really a geotechnical item. I mean, it's part of the, the grading. There will be, um, requirements for. Keys to be installed with keyway drains. Uh, it's, it's really a site-specific condition. So we can say that we will mitigate, um, any seeps or springs as, as we encounter them. But, um, it's, it's not gonna be unilaterally across all the lots that we need to do the same thing. So it, it's really a, a, a slight specific condition and, and typically as part of, uh, your ordinance, you know. For, for grading operations like this, it requires construction oversight of a design professional. Uh, and that, and, and that, it's that field representative that would be making that call. Uh, but certainly on other projects, you know, we've worked on with Gateway, you know, if there's an issue or question, uh, you know, we have field meetings with their. Geotechnical staff in the field to, to discuss. So, uh, it is something that we're aware of. Uh, and we will, we will deal with as part of the, the normal course of construction, which is, you know, standard for something, uh, of, of this type.
So I, I concur with what Tyson said, relate, related to the springs, uh, he, he is correct. They're field decisions. Uh, thi- this project will have to be inspected by a registered geotechnical engineer. And the town does require, uh, inspection reports, certifications and so forth. And, and it's typical that as springs are encountered, they're collected and, and discharged into some safe location. You can't do that or the ground becomes unstable. Uh, so a, a lot of this is field decisions. And, uh, you know, I, I was just out on a former town project that, that, uh, was approved. Over on Sumner Drive, over, um, uh, off of Babcock and would walk in the rear property in the slopes. And I can recall and found some inspectors' reports that we worked with them on getting some drainage over there. And there was actually, you could see that where they had done extra drains to deal with some encounters that they had on the slope. So again, those things are done in a field and they, they successfully work. Uh, so it's just part of the. Part of the job when you're, when you're looking at property like this.
Has everything else been done? To your satisfaction, RJ?
Um, you know, I, I really have to, on the engineering side, defer to, to our Gateway guys. Um, they're definitely more the technical experts there. Um.
Ted, I, you know, what, what I would recommend RJ is that if there would, you know, if the planning commission does decide to move this forward. It should be conditioned upon addressing the remaining comments in my May twenty-seventh letter before it goes to council. And that just catches a little, all the little things that, that are still hanging out there.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I think that that's a good way to word it.
Okay. Is there any other items that we're missing here?
Well, I mean, aside from doing the, the public comment, um, but, you know, for, for our group discussion purposes. I, I don't have anything to add.
Now, do you have anyone who wants to comment on this?
I, I sure do. Um, so I've, I've got, there have been quite a few messages that have been coming through the Zoom chat. So I'm just gonna list the people that I've got here. And if you don't hear your name but had either signed up or meant to. Please let me know in the chat after I'm done here. So I've got Colleen Lodge. Um, I've got a Jeff with Dana Camerata. Um, I'm not sure if Dana also wants to provide comment, but I believe that he is also. Here with her tonight. So I'm gonna do, um, I think Dana's request for Jeff actually came through first. So I'm, I'm gonna send that, um. And then I will do Colleen. And if I have missed anyone, like I said, please send me a chat message now. And, okay, Dana, I've got a mic request. You, there we are. If you wouldn't mind, just, I know that I've probably got your addresses in my email somewhere. But if you wouldn't mind just restating your, you know, first, last name and, and, uh, house address, that would be very helpful.
Sure, Dana Camerata, five thirty Pine Creek Road, Westford one five oh nine oh. Um, and this is for Jeff and then Sam. Here. So Jeff, you have it.
Okay, um, hi, everybody. I'm Jeff Wanker. I live at four fifty-five Pine Creek Road. And, uh, my property directly is, as I said before, is in the bull's eye of, uh, this proposed development. And my main concerns are, you know, obviously numerous, but, uh, you know. What we've asked, I've asked several questions before mainly about, and I know, uh, the geotechnical thing, but the drilling results, is it can be done, will be done? I mean, I know it's been done, but what did they say? I mean, is it stable? Is it unstable? Is it possible? Is it impossible, impossible? It's possible for the roadway to go in, but for the home sites, I mean, who's responsible for that? When the builder buys a lot, proposed lot, I mean, it's a postage stamp to put a house on. You know, as far as the, the acreage is there, but the size where the, the proposed home would be, um, isn't all that big. I might, I myself, I've been in construction my whole life and I know when you get into these things, you can incur an enormous amount of cost. When you hit springs, which has been brought up, which you're probably, you're definitely gonna do that over there. Um, so that's one thing. The other thing is, um, as far as the floodplain and, and the proposed, you know. The acquiring of the, let's say, the property, the unusable property that is in the floodplain to go to the township. To me, in my mind's eye, that's like a pass of the buck, you know, um. The developer is gonna grade all this stuff off. There's gonna be a creative problem. Tyson himself has said, it's not a silver bullet. The stormwater management that's in there. Um, so they'll graciously give you the property. And they're also gonna give you a problem in my mind's eye. So that's, and that's up to the taxpayers that is gonna be on their, on our ticket. That I already pay a lot of taxes on. Um, regarding the lots on Pine Creek, uh, which are gonna buck my house. That grade is gonna be extremely steep. I, I tried to send some pictures to Dana to afford them and, and. Try to, to get your, uh, perspective on the erosion that's happening in that stream bed that's on my property.
I know them to RJ.
And RJ has them, maybe. I don't know. She can bring them up. I took them. But, uh, I mean, it's significant and it's, it's happened, it's happening. It's worse and worse. I know everybody's gonna blame it on an uphill problem. And the only way you alleviate the problem is to put a building. I mean, you're taking away trees, you're increasing slopes. Uh, you, you can't, you're not gonna stop Mother Nature from wrecking some stuff. And, uh, she wins every time. But, uh, and then the walking trail, yeah, it's a gracious, you know, uh. Excuse me, addition to maybe the, the possibility of the property, but who's maintaining that? Is it, if, if the township gets it, is it gonna be a township maintenance thing again, expense? It's just a numerous amount of things, taxpayer dollars and the risk of my property and everybody else's downstream. So, um, that's about what I have. Uh, maybe a little bit of target panic, cause I'm not used to, uh, speaking on a Zoom thing. But that's pretty much it in a nutshell. I'm definitely against this. You know, oh, and what's gonna happen to my property taxes? I mean, I don't know what side, what, what cost these lots are gonna be and what to, you know, the size of the homes, probably a variable thing. But I'm sure it's gonna do something to my taxes and everybody else's around us. So that's a concern to myself. I mean, I think I already pay enough and so does everybody else around here. So, um. If anybody can answer any of that stuff, I'd appreciate it, but that's about what I got. Thanks.
I mean, I'm happy to respond. I mean, obviously, as we talked on the call last week, what I mentioned about it being a silver bullet is. This one development in and of itself cannot fix the entire, uh. You know, flooding and drainage issues for the entire watershed. So, um, and, and neither is it the developer's responsibility to do so. So they're going above and beyond by even offering this up to, uh, to a potential solution, uh, which again is not required. You know, we're only required to meet the ordinance. And again, as, as we discussed, and as you mentioned, you know, that erosion's gonna happen regardless of this development happens or not. But hopefully by having a flood control structure here, structure here, that is the type of development. That could help have a positive impact on, uh, on, on the rate of erosion as opposed to doing nothing at all.
And, uh, I'm just gonna screen through those photos that I downloaded really quickly. I apologize for anyone who missed the beginning of the meeting. My work laptop decided it had had enough of Zoom. And so I am winging it a little bit on my personal laptop. So I apologize for the delay. Okay, here we go. So, let's see. This is, I hope this is showing up. Okay. Um, but this is the first photo that, um, was emailed to me earlier.
It used to be, used to be able to just walk down gradually into the, into the stream. Now it's pretty much a five foot drop off. And I know it's not, you know, going to be your fault, but you're adding to the problem is my, it's my opinion by doing this development. So.
And, uh,
There is another one. This, this one's the worst one.
That's this one.
And that's what I sent to MTSA. MTSA's sewage line actually runs right underneath of that and they don't seem a bit concerned about it. And, uh, every time it rains heavily, I mean, I mean, you can see the erosion on that. So, I mean, yeah, there's definitely a problem upstream, but I think, you know.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt Jeff. I just, because we, we're trying to wing it a little bit on the photos. I don't want to cut you off, but
No problem.
We've been over the five minutes. So did, did Dana or Sam want to provide comment as well?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. Uh, Sam Kim ratified 530 Pine Creek Road. Um, I'm kind of shocked that there wasn't going to be a sidewalk on Minor Road. Um, that's new to me. I thought I saw that on a drawing. And my concern is they're talking about putting a trail in, which we're supposed to meet with them this Thursday. That's going to go from Vestal out to, uh, Brand School Road is the start. If people want to utilize that path and especially from Sudbury Minor Road area, the plans up on the hill. To have access to that would be so much nicer if you had a sidewalk instead of walking on Minor Road. So, um, it's news to me that that was not proposed sidewalks. I'm not sure how you can determine one gets a sidewalk and one doesn't. I think we need to start looking at this and look at it pretty seriously. So, um, my request would be definitely, um, to have a sidewalk put in that side of red. Uh, the other concern was, uh, Tyson, I thought we were going to get together or have a conversation about my personal things of the well. I'd never heard from you, so I'm not sure how I'm going to contact you, what we need to do. Um, that's probably not a subject that I want to involve right now, but if you could possibly get back to me, I appreciate it.
Yeah, RJ, if you can provide, uh, our information, we can, we can talk to them. I, I was expecting to get something from you actually, but, uh, we can, we can circle back on that.
Um, like I say, there, uh, the fact that you're going to donate the five acres of property, that's a wonderful thing you're doing, but obviously the geotech didn't give that much of a usage. Because of being in a floodplain and a wetland. So, uh, it's nice that you want to donate that. I can appreciate it. It's going to be up, uh, uphill or the creek. So I don't know how that's going to remediate any of the water from Pine Creek. It might help remediate something that you or your developer is going to cause, but it's not going to do much for Pine Creek because the elevation is much higher. And that's pretty much it. Um, like I say, I'm, I really would like to see and, um, press hard on that, um, the sidewalks on Minor Road. Thank you.
Okay, uh, did Dana want to comment as well, or should I move on to the next?
I'm good. They covered it. Thank you.
Uh, you said you're, you're good?
She did. Yes.
Okay. Sorry. Just a little lag on my end tonight. Okay. Thank you very much. I've, I've got Jeff and Sam down as the ones who made comment and I will get Colleen Lodge next.
Hi, everybody. I, um, I just want to say thank you for your time. Um, I think that Tyson and Josh addressed any of the remaining issues that we had concerning our property. Um, and I think they've done a lot of work to try to limit the monetary removal in that hillside that, that we were concerned about in terms of the slope stability for us. And also the overall impact to the project. So I, I just wanted to comment on the sidewalk tonight. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other public comment, RJ?
Yes, I had, um, one more signed up from Dawn Miller. I will send a mic and camera request. And again, after, uh, Dawn is done speaking, if there is anybody that I have not called out to speak yet, that's the whole list that I have. So if I missed you, please send me a message now. Thanks.
Hi. So I live at 235 Pine Creek Road. Uh, just real quickly, I want to say I, I do appreciate the efforts that the developer has made to have conversations with us. I did not attend that meeting, but I understand that, um, my fellow neighbors did attend it and it went well. Um, I, I'm always going to have concerns. I live down, uh, down stream from the development. Um, so, uh, you know, I appreciate the efforts that the developers making, but I just continue to encourage the planning commission to be mindful of those of us that live downstream who have dealt with flooding and continue and will continue to deal with flooding. Um, and, and, and to say that I do appreciate all of the thoughtfulness that you've put into the review of, of plan on Pine Creek road so far, but just to put forward my continued objection to any additional development in so much as we can, um, just be very conservative about it. I encourage you to do that. And I also just want to comment that I dropped the ball and I failed to tell Brandon and Nicole about tonight's meeting. So they're sort of, I, I don't know that they knew the folks that live down at the end of Pine Creek that get flooded, uh, way more than me.
They actually have just signed up to comment. So.
Oh, awesome. Okay, great. So I feel better about that. Okay. Thank you. That's all I had.
Okay. In that case, I, oh, okay. So I've got Nicole Schweiger, who is with, uh, Brandon Schweiger, I think that wants to make a comment. And then after that, I got Joanne Campbell. So Joanne, I will get to you after, uh, Nicole at the opportunity to comment. I have sent a mic and camera request to you, Nicole. All right. You should be, uh, good to go.
Hi. So I guess, uh, Dawn kind of preemptively guessed why I was included in the meeting because we are the people out of the whole Pine Creek Road that get flooded the worst and nobody let us know about a meeting between them and Tyson. So was that meeting recorded? Are we entitled to a meeting with Tyson ourselves? Uh, at this point, we feel very left out. We've been involved with the meetings as much as we can be. My husband spoke every time. So we're really feeling left out and, uh, I don't know ostracized at this point when we're the ones that get it the worst. We're all the way at the bottom. It's not just our yard. It's our entire house when we flood.
Hi, um, I, I just want to respond to that really quickly because I don't, I don't want to just leave that unanswered. Um, I have a handful of email addresses from folks that have either emailed ahead of meetings with photos or you know, have come in and looked at plans and things like that. So, um, the town basically set up the Zoom room as a courtesy because we haven't been able to have these in-person planning commission meetings. And usually people get the opportunity to, you know, kind of hang around and chat with the developers after. Um, so I just took every email address that I had and asked to please distribute to anybody who may not have been covered. I apologize. That you were missed in that, but I would be more than happy to loop you in on anything in the future if, uh, I can get an email address.
Okay. Is there any way for us to find out what was talked about in the meeting?
Um, Dana just sent me a message to say, please apologize for me. Um, so I'm passing that along. Uh, I, what I would suggest is Tyson, if you're willing to be connected directly with Brandon and Nicole, maybe that would be a good conversation for you all to have, um, essentially from, from my direct recollections. And again, the town was just there to facilitate, not to take a position. But from my direct recollections, they discussed a lot of the things, um, regarding stormwater and Mr. Wanker's backyard, uh, Mr. Camerata's well, I believe was also a topic of discussion.
Yeah, both Mr. Wanker and Mr. Camerata as well. Yes. But yeah, I mean, we, we kind of reiterated a lot of it here, uh, tonight. I'm certainly happy to have a conversation with you to, to go through that. But, um, you know, uh, again, the, the, the major points of that were we're meeting the stormwater management requirements of the town and/or the NPDS permit. Uh, and then making an effort to improve the greater condition by, uh, providing, uh, space for, for the town to pursue another option. We recognize that that will take time, effort and money on behalf of the town to, uh, you know, to develop that and make that come to fruition. Um, but a- as I stated before, that is, uh, is not a burden that would be typically placed upon the developer to, to fix a pre-existing condition of, of this magnitude. So, um, you know, we believe that we've made revisions to the plan, uh, you know, in good faith of listening to the, to the neighbors to the extent possible, uh, within, you know, what makes sense for this development.
Okay. Okay. Um, just before I take you off camera, I just want to make sure, was that the conclusion of what you wanted to provide for public comment?
Yep, sure.
Okay. All right. Um, next on the list, I've got Joanne Campbell and I think that's the last one. And I have sent Joanne a mic and camera request. And there you go. You are good to speak.
I'm hitting the wrong things. I'm sorry. Thank you very much for, I know I wasn't scared of the call, but I, I just, I'm a little, I have a comment here. I guess I'm confused. I mean, I'm hearing about this gift that they're giving the five acres to McCannellus for water management. But I, I guess I'm, I, I, you know, correct me if I'm a little slow here, but like, how is it a gift when McCannellus gets five acres? That now they have to control water management so that these guys can put their development in. Uh, that doesn't sound like a win-win to me. So can, maybe that's not a conversation to have now. But like, what's going on here? Like we're going to take five acres and the taxpayers are going to pay to management the flood control that is there from this development. Um, and we're, we're going to pay for it and they're going to put in a development that nobody wants. I don't get it. I don't get it.
I, I just want to provide a little bit of clarification because I think that this is the first time that, that this is coming up for anyone. It might be a little confusing.
Yeah.
So basically when, when developers put in plans, they're essentially required to control any stormwater runoff that their plan creates. That's sort of the easiest way to explain it. This flood control property, you know, potential donation, should this move forward, um, would not be for the purpose of controlling anything that is caused by this development. That is a separate requirement that they would have to meet in addition to that. That, that portion of property potentially, you know, again, of course, this is up to council, what they do long-term. But that portion of property being donated to the town opens up a lot more funding venues through public grants and partnerships and things like that to, um, do flood control and stream restoration projects. And so that potentially could be a use that the town would have planned for that, you know, over, over the future years.
Thank you. That, that helps to explain it a little bit. Um,
And I'll just add one more thing to that, just from a technical standpoint. This property is the highest point in McCannellus that we can do floodplain management. Uh, there's no further we can go would be into another township. So we can provide a lot of impact, at least to residents downstream of this property by obtaining this property. Uh, and again, as RJ said, the developer would be doing their own stormwater management. This is just an area where potentially we could, we can make an impact with a big flood control project.
Okay, I get that. Thank you for explaining that. So, um, yeah, I, I, I mean, I'm just, there's a lot, I guess, that has happened. We've been to all the meetings that I, maybe there's a lot of things posted down at the town hall that we, we weren't aware of. It's, it's not like there's a whole lot of progress that's been leading different directions here. So I'm just, uh, not happy with the whole thing. That's all I can say. So, uh, I guess, thank you for having a moment to speak. Appreciate it.
If you wouldn't mind, I apologize. I didn't catch your address. I'm sure I've got it somewhere before, but.
Sure. We're, we're, um, directly across from it on Pine Creek 435.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Um, I think that is everyone that we had signed up for public comment.
Okay. So I guess the next step is to, uh, make, is to, um, to recommend, uh, the town council approve the preliminary plan subdivision. Is that correct?
Um,
Do we make a motion to that effect?
You've made a motion and a second.
Yes, we had both.
Okay, we had both. Okay, that's good. That's good.
I think, I think we had both actually. I don't, okay. I'll just watch the video.
We just have to make a contingent on the Gateway letter of May 27th, like Dan indicated.
Okay.
I don't know if that was in the original motion or not.
No, it wasn't. I'm sure it was.
Okay.
All right. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Who was the last one? Was that you, Jonathan?
No.
Who's Lamar?
Lamar?
Yeah, that was me.
Opposed?
I.
Three opposed? Is that right? Okay.
Okay. So for, for record keeping purposes, I've got Brendan, Greg and John that are saying no. Is that correct?
That's correct from my standpoint.
Okay.
Okay.
So in that case, it would be four to three. The approval recommendation is contingent upon all of the engineers' technical comments being addressed before council considers it for approval.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Tyson.
Thank you all for your time.
Let me just, uh, take a second to, to get all my notes in order here from this one and then we'll be good to go. All right. Sorry. Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the, uh, approval of May 4th, 2021 meeting minutes. Are there any, uh, comments on those?
No, I'll be abstaining.
Okay. All right. Could I have a motion then to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes for May 4th.
Second?
Second.
That's Jonathan, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Okay.
Staying.
That is, that is one extension from Rob, right?
Okay, six, six, zero, one.
Six, zero, one. Play that number tomorrow, Ted.
What's that?
I said, play that number tomorrow.
That's good. Yeah. Is there any general public comments?
Uh, well, I don't have anyone signed up.
Okay. Uh, there was an announcement on the, uh, agenda which said that the planning commission will return to meeting in person beginning on Tuesday, July 6th. A hybrid meeting option to allow the public to still participate via Zoom may be available. Please check the town's website in advance of the meeting. So you'll be handling the technical part, RJ, and we'll just.
I, I think I, I might, might be throwing Chris, Chris into the, uh, the camera arena at least. Um, but I mean, of course I, I am still and will always be the Zoom wizard available for troubleshooting should we need it.
Okay.
I just want you to know, I will not, I will not be there next month. I'll be on vacation. So just give everybody a heads up.
You can attend by Zoom.
Not on vacation.
That's not part of your vacation itinerary?
I think I'd get divorced. I think I'd get divorced.
Yeah, I, I will warn everyone that I think it sounds like things are going to go off without a hitch, but we, we are having council be the Zoom in-person hybrid guinea pig for the month of June. So we have two council meetings to make sure that we get it right. And hopefully we will have it down to a system, uh, by the time that our meeting rolls around. But if not, um, you know, we'll, we'll keep working on it and hopefully have a way for the folks at home to still tune in, even if they, uh, aren't able to come to town hall.
Okay. Are there any other items by any of the planning commission members or council members?
No.
Okay. Did I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I, I.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Good night, everybody.
Very much.
Yeah. Good night.
Bye, everybody.
Bye-bye.